All to order the meeting of the Rutland Town Select Board. This is Tuesday, August 27th. We're convening at 5:30. So we can interview a candidate for the open lister position and then we will go into, we might take a recess between now and after we finish the interview and then before 6. So anyway, stand by. If you all rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. We have here Kurt Hathaway, Mary Ashcroft, Mark, Matt Getty. I'll get to it. What's your name again? Sharon Russell. The Select Board, Kathy Kapitansky is here to-
Come up here and sit, Kathy.
Yeah. Have a seat, please. Have we done these in executive session before or just open session?
It probably wouldn't be-
I think they have been in executive session. Okay, so why don't we do it? So is there a motion to go into executive session? Motion is made and seconded to go into executive session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. We will reconvene. The Select Board meeting, which we started at 5:30. We did the pledge of allegiance at that time. And we then went into executive session to interview a candidate for the open lister position. So with respect to that business, is there any motion?
Yes, I make the motion that Kathleen Kapitansky- Did I do that right?
You did.
Be appointed to the listers office. And you're aware that come, is it November?
November.
You have to run for the office. That's just the way it goes.
Is there a second to the motion?
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. So thank you very much and welcome aboard. Okay, then you got to get ready and run again. So see Carrie about getting a petition and all of that good stuff and what the deadlines are because it could be coming up pretty quickly. Okay, thank you. Okay, so at the top of our agenda. I did the pledge first. Yeah. Okay, so we have everybody here. We have been sitting on minutes for July 2nd and July 30th. We also have August 12th and August 20th minutes. So let's start with July 2nd. Motion has been made to approve the July 2nd minutes, additions, deletions, corrections.
I lost them already.
Was I here for that meeting?
You were.
When I did, you had three of us?
Yeah.
So we're the only three that can vote?
The three, right. Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes of July 2nd, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And just delete the ones here. Okay. Next, the July 30th.
Move to approve.
Motion's been made to approve. Who was here for that one?
I was second.
Jerome Bajo.
Motion's been made and seconded. You were out of that one.
Yep.
Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor of the July, approving the July 30th minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. August 12th, our regular Select Board meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? And that was me, Joe, and Sharon. Don't move. Motion's been made and seconded. Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Two abstentions. I'm going to circulate. Do you have the old minutes? Are they in the folder? Have you marked them up? We're going to use, we're going to use-
If he didn't, I wouldn't be able to-
Thank you. Oh, I was absent from one of these.
The second.
July 2nd. There you go. So we're on the minutes of the meeting of last Wednesday, which was our meeting up at McKinley Avenue Station. I have a number of additions to that. So because I was, I was taking my own set of things, talking with the police officers, I think, when Bill was working. So is there a motion to accept the August 20th? Don't move. Motion's been made. Second, is there a second?
Which one now?
McKinley Station.
McKinley.
Second.
It's been made and seconded. All right, discussion. So here are, so Bill, are you ready? Well, you're taping anyway.
Yeah, right ahead. I'm all set.
Okay. So the items which will be needed but are not included in the cost of construction and the scribble notes that I had. And these are questions. So correct me, and this might be the time to get them down. Eye wash station, was that included? Okay, so let's put a category we need to check. Eye wash station. The firefighter gear extractor and dryer, isn't there also a washer or is that the extractor?
I missed.
Okay. All right. The-
They might be in that stack.
For the police department. Oh, well, let's, let's, we discussed the slope on the east side. And we want to find out what the architect was planning, but I think we were headed toward not having something that had to be maintained. So a possible pollinator garden with shrubs and tree plantings, if we can get a good deal through the natural resource conservation district in the spring. Does that jive with other people's recollection? Okay. The area, there will be a barrier at the top of that slope so that cars don't go over. Is that included in the price?
That's part of the extra work for claiming the property behind the building.
Okay.
It was a guardrail that's being extended.
Okay. So that's, we'll see that as an add-on or it was already included in?
Everything to capture the back of that property is new.
Okay, so this will be something we need to-
I have some numbers. When I come up, I can show you.
Okay. It was mentioned, and I don't know whether we want to deal with it, but the conduit to the pump station, that's off-site work. It would be a separate project. It wouldn't be part of this project anywhere, correct? The shelving for the police evidence room that was not included, I don't believe. The police, the, the police chief and deputy, we don't need to purchase desks because you got them from the FBI?
Or- There's something we have here already.
Okay.
Four desks downstairs for the patrol room.
Okay. But we do need files and shelving.
Doors. No, not right now.
We do need lockers for the police department. That was not included, I don't think.
The fire department lockers are included, police and stuff.
Okay, so we do need police lockers. And the squad room, we're going to get the desks from downstairs. Okay. And then obviously chairs, and I don't want this crappy chair showing up again from downstairs.
We can do that.
Okay. And then shelving is necessary. So those are the things. Oh, also, we did have a discussion for the minutes about the color of the station, and I'd like JP to kind of go through the explanation when he comes up here so that we can add that. I had a question. I think that was other than the broom closet, because I don't think we have one. Was there a broom closet there?
I'm looking.
Okay. And then a question about, and this is my question, are there outside spigots anywhere? I know we can attach hoses inside, but are there outside spigots?
Not aware of any outside spigots.
Okay.
I saw someone where I watch.
You did?
Inside or out?
Outside.
Okay. All right. Well, that's good. So those are the things that I would request that we add. Oh, and a microwave, the microwave in the, was it the end of the squad room?
Purposes management.
There's, there's, so, but there was another very small kitchen facility in the patrol room. Okay. All right. So we need to remember to do that eventually. All right. So those would be my changes to the minutes to include those. Right. With those changes, we've got a motion. Would the maker of the motion agree to that amendment?
Yes.
And seconder?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of the revised minutes of August 20th, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Right, because you guys weren't there. Okay. So we'll probably do it again, but that takes care of these.
Did you get to July 30th?
30th is-
You've signed July 2nd. You've signed August 12th, July 30th.
There you go.
All right. So that takes care of minutes. All right. Any board member announcements? Yes, no? Okay, we'll treat that as a note. Update from the board. Very quickly, the circle will resume publication this fall. Deadline for articles for the circle, September 15th. Anticipated publication date, October 1st. So keep that in mind for timeliness. And please do get your articles in to the circle. And a big thank you to everyone who participated in townwide celebration. It was a very good event. And I think we're, we're talking changes a little bit. And we'll discuss those as we get closer to the next one, but well received. Thank you all very much. Oh, on that note, I received an email from Sarah Canfield, who was helping the eighth grade. And you'll recall that we had eighth graders help us, and they were very good help.
Excellent.
At townwide celebration. They were runners and our food prep people and so on. And in the past, we have donated $500 to the eighth grade class trip. So I would ask if you would be willing to do that again.
We might have approved it before, but I'll make that motion again, just-
Okay. Yes, putting on their motions made and seconded to donate $500 to the eighth grade class trip. And there are details in the for Carrie, I've got this, this email, and there's details on who to make it out to and where to send it. So all in favor of $500 donation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion passes. Anyone opposed? What fund? We'll put it in townwide celebration line. 2724. Okay, I'm going to put this in the folder. So if you can make sure that Carrie gets a check out to those folks. Okay. This is the time in our meeting when we ask for questions from the floor or public comments. So is anyone here who is not otherwise on the agenda for this evening? Druv? Thank you for joining us. Druv Kumar from the Cortina. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to, Chief Dumas sent us a letter regarding some animals regarding the uptick in rabies in Rutland County. So we wanted to give you guys a list of people that we've gotten so far in the last two weeks. He wanted a list of the owner type of dog, whether they got vaccinated, if they have contact with a veterinarian and proof of registration. Some of them have proof of registration in Rutland City, Rutland Town, Fairhaven, Brandon, they're all over. Because I think it's like half the list. We're trying to get more. And I forgot to bring the records from, for the actual physical records.
Okay.
And-
Thank you very much for gathering that.
And if there's anything else you guys would like me to do, I'm more than open to it. And I wanted to know if there's a way we can have a private meeting at a future date. Doesn't have to be today.
Okay, on there are certain things we can do in executive session, but it has to comply with the open meeting law. So you can take a look at that or check with Bill about what sorts of reasons we can use to go into executive session. And then set up a time when you can come in if we can do that.
Absolutely. Or if you want, you'd like to just email. You can, if you can discuss it later. Yeah, trying to get more information. Whatever you guys need help with, I'm trying to. And we're almost done with the wiring. We did three fifths of it. Because we have solid concrete ceilings and walls. So we had to run outside conduit from the inside and run it across the hallways. So we had to run it through the pool area. So we were almost, we should be done by the end of the week.
And this is for the alarms on the back doors?
The alarms are, with the company already has them. They're just waiting for the wires to get finished. So we should have that done very soon.
Okay, I think that will help. Thank you. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
So Druv, the animals that are on this list are all up to date with what they need for shots and everything?
Yeah.
Okay, and so then are-
We also told people to get if they're, because I think the rabies vaccine lasts two to three years. So with this list, they're all in compliance. Some of these people are still not, some of these people might have checked out, but knowing where, where, which apartment they ended up or what situation, you know, they might have given the pet to someone else. So this is the last records that we have. We're still getting more and more records.
So you don't have any animals there that haven't had their shots?
I couldn't give you that for certain. But these are the ones that I have records for.
Well, wait a minute. You run the place.
Yeah.
If they don't have records of their animal having its shots, then they shouldn't have their animals in your facility. Because you're not only jeopardizing that person, you're jeopardizing the other people that are staying there.
Right. But a lot of them either got evicted from their homes or they were moved from other places. So they don't have physical copies of those records.
Well, you can get them from the veterinarian.
A lot of them don't have, they're not local. They're not, maybe not from Rutland. They might be from a different area. And trying to get in contact with a lot of these veterinarians. Some of them are local. Some of them are from Brandon, like I said, or Fairhaven. They're trying to get their records as soon as possible. They're in storage. I don't know the exact situation, but I think this is around half of the list that I have so far.
Just so we're clear on what's being presented, that what you're saying is that list is a half, is half, covers half of the total number of animals?
From what we know, what I'm estimating, yes.
That's the other half is you're still working on-
We're still working on that list. Like, we, when he told us to kind of start a list, I just, we had whatever records we had already, rabies shots, vaccinations, proof of registration, we started with that. So we went door to door, knocking on people's door that we knew had animals, saying, can you guys provide us some form of proof and vaccine records? And if you guys have the name of the veterinarian that you guys go attend, you guys can just start giving us that list. So this is kind of a start that we have.
Okay. Can you provide that list and the supporting documentation to our health officer?
Yes.
Good. Thank you. If there is an incident, and we know, I mean, these things do happen, if there is a dog bite, we'll go first to that and see if there's that. I was bitten years ago by a dog in town, and it was a relief to be able to come to the town clerk's office and know the dog had been registered and had had a rabies shot.
Like I said, some of these dogs are not registered in the town.
Yes.
But we're trying to get proof of registration wherever it is in Vermont. Some of them have it, some of them don't, but some of them have the rabies shots. Some of them don't have the rabies shots. So we're just trying to get as much information as we can.
Yes, please.
But I'll try to keep you guys updated on this.
Okay, because wherever they're from in Vermont, you can contact their veterinarian that they claim gave the shots, and they'll have the records.
Yeah. But for a lot of them, if they're contacting the same place, they're getting overwhelmed with phone calls. So we're trying to, we're trying to keep up with that. So whenever they give us their documentation, we do a copy, we put it in a folder, and I upload this onto the spreadsheet.
Okay. Other questions?
Have you had any dog bite incidents? You have?
I think one or two that I remember.
Can, do you know how many?
I think one or two.
And do those people, were their dogs vaccinated?
I believe so.
I didn't, I didn't investigate though. I didn't hear anything about the kids having to get-
Rabies shots. Okay. So thank you very much for coming in, and we appreciate your cooperation.
Can I have JP's email address so I can send this to him?
Email address for-
JPfagan@rutlandtown.com. Drew just texted me and all of this.
Would you like a copy of the, the information as well? Just give them.
Thank you very much. Okay. So taking things slightly out of order, Devin Neary is here from Rutland Regional Planning Commission to talk about new legislation relating to Act 250, which is different from Vermont, state of Vermont, 250th anniversary celebration. So we're clear.
I'll be throwing more CLAs at you as we go. All right. So some of you might have seen a little preview to this in the Rutland Herald today. You know, I've been going around to other towns in the region. So for those of you that don't know me, Devin Neary, Executive Director of the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. Thanks for having me tonight. I'll try to make it as brief as possible because there's still some unknowns and Rutland sort of fits in, Rutland Town fits in quite a unique category, sort of within our region. So have you all heard of Act 181, the Act 250 reform? I assume to some level, right? Well, it's about a 200-page piece of legislation, so it is quite nuanced. But it really sets out a reform of Act 250 with a new model that is location-based jurisdiction as opposed to what we currently have. So what that means is we are going to be charting a new course through our regional future land use mapping through the update of our regional plan in 2026 that is required in Act 181 because ultimately the regional future land use maps will describe areas for growth and areas for conservation. And those areas for growth will be used to sort of describe which areas will be exempt from Act 250 or not. So there's two sort of parallel tracks here. There's this regional future land use map, which, as you all know, you have a municipal plan. And in that municipal plan, you have a future land use map. It's a required element. It might even be hiding under one of these other maps in your office. I'm sure it's somewhere in this building. So ultimately, you know, we don't expect the current regional plan or regional future land use map or your town future land use maps to be substantially altered. However, there's much more definition that's going to be required. And that is because through this legislation, there's an attempt to standardize all the regional future land use maps. Currently, each region in the state sort of does things differently, has different land use categories. All of that's going to go away, and we're going to have consistent land use criteria categories of which are baked into this law. And really, again, sort of point to those areas of growth, areas of conservation. So that's sort of the future land use side. And we'll be setting up meetings with towns starting in January to start to amend that future land use map. Right now, we have soft lines in our region. We will need much more concrete hard lines in defining those areas. So that's sort of, we'll bin that for now because that's a sort of ongoing plan update component that will be going on for the next couple of years. Really, we intend to update the future land use map with the entire regional plan in mid 2026. So as you know, we just went through a big phase of public engagement in the spring. We're going to be kicking off another round in September with a hope to release a full draft next spring in 2025. So future land use side really speaks to areas in our region that we want to see grow and conserve and areas that would then be overlapped by Act 250 jurisdiction or exemptions. So the Act 250 location-based criteria really breaks down to four main tiers. Tier 1A, tier 1B, tier 2, and tier 3. Tier 1A are our densest growth areas. Those are our downtowns in the state of Vermont. So currently in our region, the tier 1A areas are likely going to be Brandon, Rutland City, Poltonee, and possibly Fairhaven as it is now. And there's several criteria you need to meet to achieve that tier 1A status and even apply for it. All of that will happen starting July 1, 2027. That's when the permanent Act 250 exemptions will kick in. Right now, until January 1, 2027, there are interim exemptions for housing that are possible for different municipalities within the tier 1A, tier 2, tier 1A, sorry, tier 1B areas. So those are generally our downtowns and our village centers. Those are state designation centers that you apply for. Currently, Rutland Town does not have a state designation center. So Rutland City has one. West Rutland has one. There's more than a dozen in the region, but they really fall around historic dense settlement patterns similar to Fairhaven's downtown or Poltonee's downtown. So to achieve this tier 1A, tier 1B status and get interim exemptions and ultimately permanent exemptions for Act 250, towns have to meet several different criteria. You've got to have water and wastewater. You've got to have municipal zoning. You have to have municipal subdivision regulations and the ability to manage those land use regulations. Now, I'm not here to advocate one way or the other, whether your town decides to pursue those options and seek permanent Act 250 exemptions. But for you all to do that in the town of Rutland, there are several things that you need to do, starting with considering permanent zoning bylaws and establishing a village center designation. Now, in your packet, I tried to visualize for you what, what this area would look like and how big it would be. So if you look at this map in the back page, you'll see a big pink and magenta blob around Rutland City. This is describing the interim Act 250 exemption area and likely permanent exemption as well. And it's pink because this describes three layers of designations that Rutland City has. The darkest center is a downtown designation. The middle pink color is a neighborhood development area. And then beyond that is what's known as a half-mile buffer that is baked into this legislation if you have all the different land use criteria. If you look down the road here in West Rutland, they meet all the criteria because this is. A village center designation plus a quarter mile buffer around it. And that will mean that for West Rutland, because they have zoning, subdivision bylaws and water and sewer. They could be exempt for how, right now, housing units of fifty units or less on ten, ten acres or less. In Rutland City, that number is much, much higher and the area is higher as well. And ultimately, the hope is that within Rutland City and areas that achieve the tier one A level. They will be completely exempt from Act Two Fifty, not just for housing, but for all things. So really, what I, I want towns to understand are what your options are. And if you're interested in pursuing some of these things. Now is the time to consider them to work on over the next two years when those permanent exemptions will come into play. There's a lot of information here. This handout is somewhat helpful to sort of describe. In general, sort of what this location-based jurisdiction will look like. Truly for Rutland Town, you've, you're a bit of a quagmire in that, you know, you don't have a dense village center area, you know. I intentionally printed this area of town to show you because Center Rutland maybe would be that one area. That has historic structures that had a historic dense settlement pattern. It's a little bit sort of modified now, right? But one thing to consider is where you see all this, this red. That is FEMA flood um hazard areas and river corridors. Those will not, no development will be allowed in those areas. Through another bill, the Flood Safety Act, which was also passed this session as well. Rutland Town already has river corridors, so you can already have land use regs around that. But. And I believe you have subdivision regulations as well, but there's several components missing from there. So. You know, it's something the RPC is certainly willing to help the town explore. Um, you know, I've had conversations with Barbara Pulling about this. Um, and truly, it's a, a local decision at the end of the day. But understand that there could be some real wins with Act Two Fifty exemption. Especially to support real housing growth, which is something. In Rutland County that we really believe we need to reduce tax demands um and grow our population. Instead of this sort of steady decline that we've been on for the last two decades. Threw a lot at you there. I want to sort of pause and see if there are any questions about this stuff and sort of. Finger on the pulse of what you are thinking. Any, any questions?
Oh shit, it's great.
So without.
Literally, right in that area.
There isn't much that this revision's going to do for us.
I mean, we, even if we passed zoning.
So wouldn't be exempt.
You would still need to establish the, the area, the village center.
Move everybody to one spot.
Yeah, well.
I will say this, several towns in our region have more than one designated, designated area. For instance, Castleton has three. There's one in the village by the college. There's one at Four Corners and another one in Hydeville. So it's not unusual to be spread out a little bit. But again, there was that historic settlement pattern within those three sort of distinct areas in town. You know, when I looked at, I was staring at the map today before I came to this meeting being like, okay, where in Rutland would this be other than Center Rutland? It's really hard to say, um, because it seems like most of the housing growth in Rutland Town is really happening in the north and the east. Um, and those are areas where you can expand. Unfortunately, those areas aren't served by municipal sewer and water.
Yeah.
So we're sort of, you know, that's not a possibility either as of now, you know, future connections could be made for sure, but. Um, it's sort of hard to justify as is, right? So it's.
Act Two Fifty will continue to govern in, in our town.
Yeah, so most likely, if this were the case. Rutland Town would be mostly in the tier two and tier three category. So tier two is what they're sort of describing as Act Two Fifty light. And it's sort of rural residential, if you will. And then tier three is critical natural resources, absolutely no development. We expect those areas to be. Very um well mapped and um really isolated based on. Environmental and geo, geographic conditions like high elevation, ecological resources, those sort of things.
River corridor.
Yeah, exactly. So um. Yeah, it's, I, I was hoping to have more of a silver bullet for you folks um to consider here. Um, but you know, the Center Rutland could be something, you know, there, I know there's always been. Sort of desire to see redevelopment along Business Route Four. That could help spur that redevelopment potentially if it were ultimately exempt from Act Two Fifty. So.
But it's all floodblown.
A good portion of it, at least according to this map.
Most of it that's developable land is floodblown.
Yeah, so.
It's got water and shore.
Yeah. So we still have some things to. Yeah, yeah. We do still have some things to work out. Um, all the regional planning commissions have a mandate from the legislature to define the criteria in which we're going to be sort of. Mapping those tier one B areas. That's due by the end of this year, so. That's why we're sort of setting January first as our start date for the future land use map update for the region. But I imagine, you know, they still need to establish the land use board that is replacing the natural resource board. Hire a director, you know, they're appointing members now. There's a lot that sort of needs to happen. Before this goes into permanent effect um in twenty twenty-seven, so.
In the meantime, Act Two Fifty is there and governs with some changes like the road rule.
Yeah, so road rule, you know, that is really going to be part of those tier two, tier three areas as well. Um, and that's more the rural development. What Mary is referring to is a. Eight, I believe the statute is eight hundred feet of private drive or two thousand feet of a combination of private and municipal road. Don't quote me on that. That's, it's changed so many times. Um. So yeah, there's quite a few new provisions. Um, and where Rutland Town ultimately lands is a bit of a mystery, but what will. Really be the indicator is the mapping for the future, regional future land use map. These are other things to consider on top of that for those Act Two Fifty exemptions. Um, I can send you, I'll send it to Bill. Uh, they just published an online um arc map. That shows all these areas in a sort of more interactive format that you can click on, so you guys could just see. Where in Rutland County is this happening? How does it look? Um, because we have, we have a lot of small towns with incredibly small village centers. For instance. Instance, there's a village center in Ira, um, where the town office is. And I'd say you, you are more dense than that. Um, so you know, something to consider. More importantly, what I want to leave you with is the message that whatever you decide, you know, we are here to help as either technical advisors. To even work with a planning commission on any regulations or bylaws that need to be written or updated or applying for a designated area. So. There are grant resources out there. We have resources well, as well. Um, so I wanted to just leave you with that, that when the time is right, if it ever is, um, we're around. So just please let us know.
We should. Put this on a future meeting agenda to talk about whether we want to pursue either the designated. Actually both. If we want to get into this part. Um, we would need to talk about zoning and need to pass on the, we would need to designate a village center. So. Whether, and, and we should. Let our planning commission know because they'd be doing much, much of the work and we would be contracting probably with the regional commission. But we shouldn't just let it slide. We should actually talk about whether we're going to do it, right? I think that's.
Yeah, and that could be a great mandate for the planning commission, the town planning commission as well, investigate. Where would it even be possible to fit a designation center if anywhere other than Center Rutland? So, well, thank you for the time. I appreciate it. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Good to see you all.
Take care.
Thank you.
And thanks for going around with this.
Yeah.
Was a good article.
Yeah, and we will be back um in the next couple of months to do an update. Just a update on the regional plan. Um, and we'll have another staffer here to visit you all for that. So. We're visiting all twenty-seven towns again this, this time around. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey. Um. Anyone? Kind of falls under. One of our department head reports or under action needed. Did that. Alright. So we'll start in with Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer. Good evening, Carrie.
Good evening. Just a couple of things tonight. Um, two reminders really. Our first tax deadline for our first installment is coming up September tenth. Um, I wanted to mention that. Not only for the reminder, but our next select board meeting is also on that date. And that's really not a problem for our meeting. Um, but I wanted to give department heads a heads up. That the next round of um coding your bills, maybe we could do. Um, you know, getting them to me a little earlier so that we can get them in. Because it'll be busy for taxes and the orders. So um I usually ask for them by Friday. If we could stick to that, that would be fantastic. I have, um, if, if most of you haven't met Deb, um, she's the third person in our office. She is absolutely one hundred percent phenomenal. And um with her in there, we're able to get um, stay on track and get our things done. So if we stick with Friday, that'll work just perfectly. Um, for bills and payroll next time. Um, and let's see. Uh, the second thing I wanted to mention. Um, is the November election, even though it's kind of far away. I received um email from the Election Division. Think it was Friday or this Monday, um, and they are pulling our address file. Um, on Monday, September second, I'm assuming it's probably scheduled because it's um Labor Day. But that's when they will be pulling our addresses for all active voters, meaning um. That November will be a mail-in election. Um, they're sending out ballots for that. The state is, we are not part. Of that. We didn't make that decision. The state did. Um, so. If you are looking to become a registered voter. And you haven't yet, this is the week to sign up. You can sign up online or you can come into my office. Um, when they do pull those addresses, it will be as of September second. So if there's any changes. That anyone has for an active voter after September second, which there will be. Um, we will have to take care of that in our office as needed. Um, so. That's the plan for November. I'm assuming probably in October, you're going to see the ballots come to your house and this is for president. So. If we do have a Lister position, I'm going to have to look into that really quickly to get her name. On the ballot. I had to put JP's for both parties in by last Friday. So I'm hoping that the deadline isn't passed for that. I will look into that tomorrow for Kathy.
Okay, thanks. If it is, then I guess we can't. Have an election for that position in November and we'd have to wait till March, right?
Sort of what, yeah, it is what it is. So I, I.
So.
Like that.
Yeah, maybe that's not horrible. Um, if we did put her on the ballot, would we have to print ballots and mail them out ourselves? How would that work?
Other question. Yeah, I was wondering that. So let me look into, me send an email to. Uh, probably Lori Borland at the Elections Division and see what she says for an answer and I'll let you know tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, because that, I was thinking about that. How are we going to do that? Because it would have to be separate.
Yeah, because she would have to, you know, circulate a petition and get signatures and all of that in order to be on the ballot.
Yeah.
If it's possible to do, notice it may not be a disaster if we missed a deadline.
Right, it might not be.
Because we could always catch it in, in March.
And we could just reappoint her if we have to.
Right.
Right, she just fails to get herself on the, I mean, if losses, she has to be, she's up for a reelection, but she doesn't run.
Right.
We can reappoint her.
Yeah, okay.
Or, I mean, we could do interviews again if other people are interested.
Yeah, two months, she might not want that.
That's right. Okay, alright, so we have. That's, that's the plan. Thank you, Carrie, for that. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll look into that tomorrow. Those are the things I really had to remind people about. Um, you did the circle, so that's, that's good. So that's it, really.
Um, thank you to all of the folks who voted uh at our primary election. I thought that. Well set up, Carrie, well run, so no problems and the pizza was good. Thank you.
Yeah, that went pretty smoothly. The participation of, uh, across Vermont was pretty poor. So it wasn't just our town. We had a very low participation. I think what, four hundred and something people came out to vote out of a. Active voters of three thousand, so pretty poor, but not just Rutland Town.
Right. Okay, any questions for our town clerk? Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much. Alright, Mike Delahanty, Town First Constable. Did you just lean on Dell?
Listen, there's a lot of screwing around going on over there. I'm telling you that right now. Good evening.
Good evening.
One boy's a whole boy, two boys a half boy, three boy, no boy at all.
I'll write that down. Um. Nothing, nothing crazy to bring up tonight, um, except for um. In the last week or so down at the South Bend, I'd had some conversation with some um current Cortina Inn residents who. Um, in the next month or so are going to lose that, their voucher. Um, because their eighty days is coming to an end. Um, and every single person I had asked what their plan was. Every one of them said they're going to start camping out behind Farrell's and anywhere they can. Um, no other option because they said the housing wasn't even available. Um, so yeah, they were very quick to respond saying that they're going to start camping. Um, so Chief Dumas and I have been out there before and they, they set up. When they set up a camp, uh, it's, it's, you'd be shocked to see what they set up out there between using pallets and. It's a, it's a community that they set up out there. So in saying that, um, I have no idea when it comes to Cortina, how many people um are no longer going to be eligible. But I think it's worth maybe a conversation with some of those stores. Because the last time we were out there, the amount of stolen property from Dix, uh, the amount of stolen food from Hannaford's um was overwhelming. But I think maybe a conversation with Farrell's, I'm sure they're aware, but I think, I think it's worth having that conversation. I think.
Farrell slam.
Yeah.
They were going to do um some clearing out there. They had, were in talks with a logging company. I think the price tag was shocking because they were going to take it all down and make it a field and it never happened, but I do think it might have been due to price. Um, I think the amount of people they have their first time, I think is just minimal compared to what they could have. And I don't know, these other hotels in the city. Um, I think those people, anybody who's no longer eligible could end up on town land. Um, I think it's, I think it definitely could happen. So um, they wanted to, a conversation Chief Dumas and I had, they were going to get a um. A wood stove. Uh, the last time for last winter to be out there. Um, I, I have no idea what this could look like this year. So starting September fifteenth. Um, I have no idea what that's going to look like, but I think, I think a conversation with Jonathan from Hannaford's and, and asset protection from some of these other places in. and, and asset protection from some of these other places in Plaza. Think if they don't already know, I think it'd be wise to bring them up to speed on what this potentially could look like and what they could do for especially Dix. Those cold days are coming. And I think anything that they have tents and camping gear and sweatshirts, I think it's not screwed down. It's gonna be taken. So I think these conversations probably need to happen. And I gladly even start those conversations tonight down there to bring them up to speed on what this potentially could look like. So.
State has no, they're just gonna boot these people out and no plan.
Correct. The city of Rowan, I know, has been reaching out to commercial residential property owners of vacant properties, advising of this and the fact that according to the city, the state has no plan.
Oh, yeah, they haven't had a plan for.
Yeah, and yeah, and here we, here we are with another delay of another year. Still no plan. Anybody, anybody in the town that has any vacant property, whether it's residential as well, it.
You know the largest vacant property in Rutland town.
Is.
To do the business.
Within walking distance of where they all are.
Yeah.
So they may not be in back of Farrell's. They just, they just set up shop up there.
Sure, sure.
So what do you think?
I agree.
That's, that's, I mean, that could house everybody that's in that.
So that property owner should definitely be contacted. And, yeah.
He's, he's coming the twenty fourth.
Okay, very good.
Okay, great.
Awesome.
That's nine days after.
Fire the sense of security. We're still getting calls and I'm like, you have your own security. Take care of it.
Yeah.
Trying to think of any other large unoccupied places, but that's, that's the first one comes to mind.
Yeah.
Another issue we're gonna have is campers camping in all the parking lots. Green Mountain Plaza is pretty good. They have a gentleman there that takes care of it. If you're camping there, we'll come morning time, your camper's leaving. They have a no tolerance policy for those campers. Home Depot, not the same. We get, they want us to do things. I'm saying, I give a trust assessment, but you need to tow them out of there and they'll go away. But they want the town to take care of this problem. And as we know, getting rid of a camper, there's no money for tow companies. So the last one we looked at was what? They wanted twenty five hundred dollars.
Remember that, yeah.
That's what we're looking at at this point. Things of that. They tow a few of them and the homes go away, it will stop. They will, we'll get around. Don't park here, don't park there. But it's up to individual landlords to take care of stuff. I mean, it's not.
Right.
Town yet.
That's right.
Can, can Farrell's post that property there?
They can, and they have. They've been very good.
Have they posted it?
They're pretty, the last time a gentleman OD'd down there, they, they were really, they were annoyed about that. And they didn't want that happening. They posted everything. Signs up, we walked with them. I think Ken and I walked there. Let each individual person know, yeah, go now. These people want you gone. They were there with us as a guy. No, we don't want you. You're not welcome here.
They don't wanna camp out behind the Cortina? Is that not a good campsite?
Right, and they're gonna use anything.
It's a little squishy out there.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, you know, they, they would have, probably people would find less obstruction being back there than it would be at Farrell's, some of the other places. But I, I know along the tracks, there's always been communities of people homeless that have set up along the rural tracks.
Yeah. But that, the option of being out there for a few months and then getting back into the program, that's no longer gonna exist.
Yeah, well, there is cold weather.
You're gonna have the cold weather.
Sure, but you're gonna have, you're gonna have multiple days.
Yeah.
Yep.
The state. Till December first, unless you get some really, really, really cold nights, but you're gonna have a couple of months of it.
Three months of problems.
Yeah.
And then some. So, so would it be advisable that like Hannaford's and Dix's? That, I mean, you guys are gonna talk to them obviously. I don't know if there's any way they can look into in-store security, in-store something, you know. Policy is what promotes this to being an epidemic of problems. You know, if, if there could get away from that and people would be apprehended. Of course, you guys arrest people, put them wherever and they're, they're out before you guys got the paperwork done, which is discouraging and disappointing for our system. So I'm not sure what the answers are, but they, they need to be, you know.
Big sticks.
Big sticks.
Well, I mean, I have my answers, but they're not exactly what.
It's allowed anymore.
I think some of that stuff, maybe Dix could store out back. And if you're looking for a tent this time of year, which most people probably aren't.
In some place in storage.
Yeah, they could go out if you walk in there and say, I'm looking for a tent. They could go get one for you.
Clothes are a little harder.
Yeah, yeah. Put it in their hands, be like, hey, here's what's going on. This is what's coming your way. If you guys have an opportunity to lock it, store it, whatever it might be, but at least we said we told you so.
Yes, no, I think that's important and I like the idea of outreach.
You know, and I think they'll, they'll appreciate us taking that, you know, initiation that's coming from you guys that this is what the plan is. This is what's gonna happen. And, and you guys get hit. I mean, it's a shame that they get hit so hard. Struggling to do business and then to be. This, the other thing is, you know, I'd like to write these folks a map here again and say, okay, you're dumping all these people out. Now what are we doing with them?
That's right.
What, what's your plan here? Because, you know, we've been a thorn in their side. We have been a thorn in their side since this started. And, and I think that we need to continue to be a thorn in their side. And, you know, we haven't had a real life press conference, Mary, where you sat down and had the media here and explained what's going on and tell them what is lacking and what the problems are. And maybe it's, maybe we need to do that. You know, make, make some real live noise that, you know, we've got all these people, they've been giving this handout for two, three years and now it's being taken away. And what's, what's gonna happen? What, where, where and what? No incentive for people to do better.
Here's the state.
So, as a question, but I guess my comment at first, I mean, in some sense, this is what people have been asking for, is to take the handout away and then incentivize people to find a different alternative if they're just freeloaded.
Right.
And, but I don't know what the situation is. I was gonna ask Mike, but I mean, ultimately, there's really two solutions. It's you take the subsidy away and people go camp. Or that somebody's gotta build a structure and keep housing them somewhere. And that means either they're gonna, they're gonna, the state's gonna build a structure or they're gonna lease one. And the most likely lowest hanging fruit solution to this is they finally finalize the deal with Cortina. They leased the thing and the people stay there. And so, Mike, I'm wondering from your conversations with people that you've talked to, I'm pretty sure I've asked Drew, that's why he was here, but cuz we don't know how many people that are there now are gonna run out of days. But, I mean, do you have any idea, you have any ability to characterize what their situations are? You know, what, what might have qualified them to still be in the program at this point? Are, are we talking about people that are disabled and can't work? Are we talking about? People who just don't wanna work?
Yes, yeah, there's, there's different things, age, disability. If there's children involved, there's, there's different requirements to keep them in the program. But there will be a large number of people obviously won't apply. I think it's, I wish Drew was still here because they have a pet policy posted at the Cortina, one dog and one cat. I, I'm gonna tell you just from experience that, that, that is not the case down there. So even when these people do leave, what they have packed into a room is what most people pack into an eighteen hundred square foot home. So when they are removed, I think that's also gonna be interesting to see the amount of pets that probably gonna be left behind, which is gonna fall on myself and, and John Paul to, to, to remove these animals. But then the Humane Society is only gonna take so many. It's gonna be interesting to see what happens moving forward cuz I don't know what they're gonna do with all these personal belongings once they are removed because it's going to require a storage unit that they don't have. So, yeah, the, some of them obviously will continue to meet those requirements, but a lot of them, based on what the state rules will be, will be on the street along with all of this stuff. And I'm, I'm talking multiple dogs and multiple cats. There, some of them, there's reports of breeding down there. So there's some rooms that are probably filled with dogs. And I think some of those people, and I don't know for sure, won't meet those requirements cuz I think some of them are younger than I am. And I, cuz I don't necessarily know their disabilities or what the reasons are for having the voucher to begin with, if they will meet it moving forward. But if they don't, it'll be something. So, but we'll, we'll, we'll do our part. And I'll, I'll start the outreach tonight downtown or down to that end. To let them at least know what's happening.
I know they're giving notices because they're showing up at the mission to eat. We have, in the last two weeks, more than doubled people coming in to eat. And we had a couple today. They had been thrown out for behavior. And the girl said, you know, we didn't do this, whatever. But she's not somebody that we would be able to take at the mission. There's tracks up and down the arms, the legs, and we just don't tolerate it. And we've been told that DCF has said, well, the mission's rules are too strict. And the mayor of the Rutland is the one that originally stated that, we're too strict. Well, it's a hand up. It's not a handout. And.
No plan, Sharon, beyond the handing out. They, they don't have the next step in place.
No.
The state missed.
And, and, and in all fairness, Joe, you gotta have the first and last month's rent. And, and I'm here to tell you, if I was a young person to try and, and meet that, I mean, especially if you're somebody that's handicapped or, you know, the handicap folks, folk rehab and the state are somewhat mandated to find them something. And that, that, some of it's mental illness, you know, and, and some is physical disability. So those people, for the most part, are okay. But when you've got people that are drug addicted, that doesn't count. So.
The, the four or five people I spoke to that night, I, I don't know their circumstances. But not one of them had said, we're moving into an apartment or some sort of other facility. Everyone was like, we'll be camping. We'll, we'll be all back camping. So that was, they had already made that decision cuz I'm, I'm assuming is the only option they have.
The state people, when they were in here, said they would be back in touch. They'd have probably the MOU close to finalized by August. This is August. Shall we invite them back in to give us an update and address the question of what, what do we do with campers?
Gotta do something. And we have to keep the spotlight on this management of this.
Do you wanna do it the same day? We've got the mall coming in, who is also gonna come back to us in August.
Yeah, but that was several Augusts ago.
And that's, when are they coming in?
The twenty fourth.
Alright, shall we do it on the twenty fourth of September? Or do you wanna do it sooner?
I think.
Maybe we oughta do it sooner because.
Yeah.
This, you said.
It'll be nine days into this problem by then.
So in five days, this plan, this comes in. What is your plan for these people?
Yep.
You just throwing them out in the street and let them, you know, at the mercy of the.
And the shelters are all full. I mean, most of the shelters are already have filled up statewide. So there's.
This is, this is like day by day. Okay, we're gonna send another hundred million dollars out here and then tomorrow we'll think of send some more money, but we have no long range plan.
Alright, so we'll invite the state folks to give us an update, as they said they would, on September tenth.
Make sure you're here for that, please. Because we discussed your, the state says you have no ability to enforce rules. And the gentleman that was here seemed stunned by that. And I don't know if you ever had an opportunity to get in contact with him, but.
So I understand they did a, a room by room inspection. They never notified me. I was not a group. They were doing it and I haven't seen the results. I think I'll know I passed.
Okay.
Yeah, they don't want you to know. Right, they don't want us to know. And that brings me to another point, Mary, the us adopting the state's statute as an ordinance or whatever to allow J, empower JP to do what he was doing and could do. And state, Kevin has that, right?
He has it.
He needs to build a fire under that. With, you know, that's been a couple of months now. We, we need that in place so that we can look, you know, people have accused us of not being sympathetic to the people's plight down there. And I think it's a hundred percent the other way that our concern is welfare of these people and what's gonna happen to them and the living conditions. And we're not being allowed to look into that. You know, the state is blocking us at every opportunity to acknowledge the poor living conditions there. And, and we just need to stay on top of that.
Okay, so we'll see if we can get the ordinance draft from Kevin. We will see if we can get the state folks here on September tenth for an update cuz there'll be a few days into the end of the voucher, one voucher program anyway. And then we'll hear from the mall on the twenty fourth. In the meantime, you'll start reaching out to property owners and letting them know of the.
What's to come.
Things might happen.
In your packets are letters from the city. And they, they have sent those out to commercial and vacant property owners. They're having a meeting tomorrow morning with them to talk about this problem. Yeah, it's.
I think the city also has an ordinance that we do not have. Wasn't that the basis of?
Yeah, well, they have, they have building inspectors so they can.
Yes. We. That would be E and, there's two letters, E. Yeah, make sure your property is registered with the city, for example. And it's not things that we have any ordinance on.
Property ordinance.
Yes.
Do you get anywhere, Mike, with a property on the corner of Gleason Road?
Mr. Rogero, yeah.
I noticed the hole's still.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I've had a couple of conversations with him. He, I mean, I'll call it effort. But, so they've done, he made a little bit of effort to try to clean up that property. I don't know if you noticed, he, he did some other thing like paint and got rid of some of the graffiti and they cleaned up around the property. There's a, still the front door to the, on the west side is still unsecure. So I've had that conversation with him recently. He's got a couple of guys that are going around to some of his properties, trying to clean them up. But when it comes to that hole, he's, Mr. Rogero has changed his tune. He is not interested in putting a whole lot of money into that property to build the wall that we had spoken on originally.
Why is he putting any money into the property?
Yeah.
Why is he painting around the hole?
Yep.
Why not just?
Why not just?
Yeah, he's, he's, he's not, he's not gonna tear it down yet cuz that would cost money. So.
He didn't do anything with the property right here that he got for.
That's right.
Dance.
Oh, yeah.
And, and he, that building is all exposed to weather. So.
Yeah.
It's a mess.
Yeah.
So at what point do we get to force his hand? Is there a point where we can do something?
We've got an attractive nuisance ordinance.
Yeah.
So.
We've given him plenty of.
Oh, way too much time to, to try and, and do something with that property. And effort was made, but it wasn't the effort that we were looking for. The, the graffiti and the, and the growth of the brush around was not the concern. It was that, it was that west facing wall.
My recollection is under the ordinance, we have to have a public hearing.
Correct.
Invite the property owner in, give adequate notice.
Correct.
And then go through whatever the criteria are set out in the ordinance. We've done one.
Done one.
Yeah.
Successfully.
We can, and we can do another one.
Yeah, and I think that's probably what we're at with it. I know it's.
So why don't you proceed with going in that direction, please?
It's time.
Yeah.
Did they do anything with the property they purchased here on the taxi?
I don't know.
I believe he ended up with that property, didn't he? And, and he got the, I, I missed, I don't know if it's the BCA, whoever negotiated that settlement, but they got the water bill down or the, the taxes down because he said it was gonna cost so much to tear it down. And so they lowered it with the idea he was gonna tear it down and then he did nothing. So that'll be the next.
I don't remember the teardown part, Joe, and I was at that meeting.
Well, wasn't, but didn't he complain about the cost of tearing it down?
He was complaining about a lot of things.
So he didn't wanna pay the full taxes or the full water bill.
That's correct.
So that he could tear the building down.
Well, we didn't have any jurisdiction over the water, but we did over the taxes.
And we lowered. And we lowered.
Wasn't my idea.
Right. But he didn't keep, because I do believe that that was, you know, there should be minutes from that meeting probably. But I thought that was the reason that he wanted the sums lowered so he would have money. Cause he said, if I had to pay this money, I'm not going to be able to take the building down. So he did, he got.
Were you at that meeting?
No, but I. I missed it for some reason and, and I don't know, probably was one day we got to do hay and I didn't show up. But I, I think I heard the, um, outcome of that. That's why I knew a little bit about it. But anyway.
Okay. All right. So we've put stuff on your plate. Thank you very much.
You got it.
You know, I got to tell you, I'm really kind of amused that you brought up your little tablet, but you have. A piece of paper on top of it with writing.
So I carry this thing everywhere I go. That's just right off. Yes, exactly. Exactly. So, yeah, I know. Like, you know, new technology, but I guess I'm still old school. I don't know.
Front of that original folder, two and block now. Saw that or not?
Oh. Gee, it looks like. August sixteenth. Was your birthday and happy birthday. You're welcome.
Yeah, forty.
And, and was it really?
Yeah.
And, and Deputy Chief Washburn, August twelfth was your birthday and we missed them. We're really sorry. Dave Sears, we got to you. Thank you very much. All right. Ed Dumas, town police chief.
We have to have a citizens committee here pretty soon. Keep helping these guys.
So I don't have, I don't have the, we'll have next time, I guess, for meeting or, uh.
The.
Activity sheet.
Yeah.
The numbers. Yeah.
And we're doing them once a month now, right? Yeah, right. Which is nice. The other thing is we, uh, we mentioned in the, in the police committee meeting a while back about the switch to plan D for the retirement program. For the police.
And that would be something that we have to take up at the time we're budgeting because it would be for.
We, we have to.
Oh, that's right. We do have to do a vote.
We have to, yeah, put it to a vote so we can give it to the states. They can know that we thinking about it or whatever, so that we don't lose this opportunity. Other than.
So what's the deadline for us to do that?
So it has to be in before September thirtieth to the state.
Okay.
So we vote, it goes two weeks, you approve the minutes. And then once I have the approved minutes, I forward that to V M report.
So it's a full select board vote. Okay.
And be our next meeting then.
We, we need to.
Can we just talk about it tonight? And you can just, and then you have two weeks to think about it after that.
What? Well, you can give us an outline about it.
Okay.
Um, and then it's something we need to put on the agenda for next meeting. And then you have something in writing for it. Okay.
Go ahead. It'll affect you more. No, it, this is for the new guys in the police, on the police department, not for myself. It won't do me much good at all. Basically, it's a plan. We have different, we have A, B, and C in the V Mers system. This is, uh, Plan D. And it was set up just for emergency workers, firemen, uh, rescue workers, police. Are the only ones eligible for it. It's just, uh, they take more from us. The town gives a little more and they get done at a younger age. That's, uh. The plan. We can draw from it earlier in a nutshell. That's what it is.
I think when we were talking about it in police committee, we wanted you to run some numbers to see what it would cost.
It's very possible that I didn't do that.
Well, we, so we talk about now, we will have the gun. We will, we will give some, some numbers.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, so we've got, we've got time to do it. This.
Right.
This would be my, my recollection was. It would. It would enhance. Our, um, ability to hire people.
Correct.
Because we are offering a top line of the. Pension program offered. And it would, I mean, the employee would have to contribute more as would the town.
Are you prepared to go through this chart and explain to us the differences? Cause I got some of it. I understood some of it. I did not.
I would love to call the retirement board and have somebody call into that meeting. Cause, uh, yeah, I get what you said.
And we'll try to have a committee meeting in the next two weeks. What, what plan are we on now?
C, C.
See, it looks like the totals, it's, uh, Plan C is a twenty point. I'm looking at this last page. It looks like it's a three percent increase, four percent. Yeah, we're.
We're going to, the town would donate.
We're going from eight seventy five.
To eleven, eleven, six, January first.
Or July three, five.
We're going to donate about three percent, two and a half percent more.
Yeah, it goes to eleven, six, July first. It says, says on the first page.
And is the retirement age, is that a mandatory retirement age at fifty five or it's just you can at that age?
It's so, yeah. So if you have twenty five or twenty years in the state system at fifty, you can retire early, they say, with no penalty.
Right.
Currently in group C, there is no early retirement age. It's, you could be eligible at fifty five. But that's the state side. That's not, we can work until we're sixty five here.
Right. Okay. And, and the purpose of this is just to accrue a retirement benefit a little faster.
Yeah. Right.
So the cost to the town. Would be about three percent from eight, seven, five, and he says one, eleven, six. So it's about three percent increase. But the employee is also paying one and a half percent addition to. So it would cost us a little bit more on what we set aside. So we'd be looking at, we took the number that we set aside for gamers now. And multiplied it by what? That would give us a number and I don't know what that is. But.
Okay. I bet you should be able to get that for us.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And so if we just, we turn on this in two weeks. And then the minutes will be approved on the twenty fourth. It's cutting it a little close to get it to where it's got to go by the thirty.
As long as the meeting minutes are approved, I can submit them the next day.
Okay.
That's all I need.
And you're okay? If you want to look at this a little bit more before we vote or?
I would suggest you do. Yeah. And we need the number, um, in fairness, because we've got to build it into our budget and we. You know, we don't usually budget till a little later in the fall, but we should know what this number is.
So then is this part telling us the actual benefit or am I just saying that you're just able to retire or is it?
Yeah. Is that amount in the, um, it's in the general, isn't it for everybody or is it wrote down by?
You know, my notes may have had it, but.
Might be for everybody. Group C.
Well, the, the way it's in the budget lines. Yeah.
Well, it says municipal retirement. It is a separate line item.
Police budget?
In the police budget. And we have budgeted. Thirty four thousand, which went up from. It was last year's budget.
Thirty four times three percent.
It went up from twenty five thousand, five hundred.
So it could be three percent of that number.
Prove this right down.
Yeah. It's not going to be based on that number though. It's based on what the employee wages. So you have to look at what they're actually.
Cause there's an increase.
Well, so the thirty four thousand is going to be go up a little bit because thirty four covers the current wages. So they'll get. A little bit more. So it'd be less than fifteen hundred dollars. Anyway, look. Cause the, the.
Actually it's closer to. It's just over a thousand dollars.
Right now. And, and if. If you figured a three percent increase and I'm just going to do this kind of help it in, um, if we give everybody a three percent raise. Theoretically that thirty four thousand will go up three percent. So that'll go up to about thirty five. Five, say, and then we're going to take three percent of that.
Okay.
So it's, it's not a lot of money.
All right.
But you would, I mean.
You folks ready to vote on this?
I, for that amount of money, I could vote tonight, but that's just me. I'm okay with that.
All right. Well, if we're going to do it tonight and it looks like there's a nod there, is there a nod? Okay. Um, so somebody needs to make a motion that's clear enough. That we can have it printed in the minutes, approve the minutes at our next meeting and send it up to the state.
In this July one, so it's twenty, twenty five.
Yeah.
Twenty five.
Twenty five.
Probably for next.
And it's for the next fiscal year.
To begin July first, twenty twenty five. So it's next fiscal year. It doesn't affect this year at all.
Right. So we are going to, you move to the, um, group D plan. And this pertains to just the PD, right?
So for right now, yes.
Yes.
It is the sworn officers of the PD.
Okay.
Then other emergency services, if that happens in the future.
So I'd make a motion that we, um, approve the request from our police department to. Change their retirement, um, group from group C to group D. And this would be effective July one of twenty twenty five.
Yes.
Yes.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to move our retirement plan from group C to group D for the police department. Any discussion? Everybody clear on?
I think we discussed it pretty good. Everybody got.
All in favor, please say aye. It's like it's, is there anyone opposed? Okay. Here. So make sure Bill does it right. So you can.
I think I got everything you wanted in there, didn't I?
The motion pretty much hammered that.
I think that's, uh, Brock, just one more thing is. A new hire. We're just waiting on.
I have one more interview I have to do. And then I planned on reaching out at the end of this week to the police committee to schedule a meeting for sometime next week.
Okay.
Over everything in executive session.
Okay. Um, and that would be the new hire for.
The police.
The department.
Right. Patrol position.
CF, um, CFAC.
I haven't heard anything back from.
Okay. And school resource officer.
Alan's, I just got to start that one. We've been pretty, there's just two of us working right now. So.
Yeah, I know. Yeah.
Behind.
When does Jimmy come back?
Uh, he'll be end of October. I just, I just saw him today.
Okay. All right. Right. Um, Rooster, by the way, won the speed cart challenge. We had to maneuver that because we had someone on the police department who wasn't winning. So we figured if we put Rooster in there.
So I. My understanding, he is going to be seventeen next month. Stands about six foot three. He ran eighteen. Which was quite impressive.
Wow.
Until an off duty trooper with the state police decided he wanted to do it and he ran it at eighteen.
Okay.
So.
Okay. And but Rooster beat them both.
Rooster.
Twenty two.
So what's that tell you? Don't try to outrun the dog.
And we should get that word out.
That would be so fun to watch.
I know, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, any questions for our police departments?
And I, didn't, didn't he get to, did he get to participate in some other activity on Saturday? I ran into Jimmy at Tenny.
Yeah. So the city called for an assistance on a traffic stop where it ended up Rooster alerted to the vehicle. They ended up getting felony amounts of crack cocaine. Out of the vehicle. So, so he was a good boy that day.
He had a busy, busy day.
Yeah.
There, I worked this job long, a long time and then, like I said. Jimmy's a really good officer and the brains run down the leash of the dog. And I'm telling you what, that is going to be quite a team right there.
Yeah.
It's crazy good. So.
Good.
Very impressed.
For all the naysayers about us getting the dog. He's proving everybody pretty much.
And he's, uh, Jimmy tells it, he's tracking. He's, he's like. A machine. He just, the dog is just, he won't even, doesn't care about food or his toy when he gets the command to, to find somebody. He's. All, all about that. So. We're looking forward to this. Get him back.
Um. Back to the, you were, you saw that we amended the minutes to include the materials and those furniture and furnishings you need. So. I think the, the three things, does it go in next? Does it go in? Does it come out of a capital budget? Does it come out of a line that you already have in the budget? Or do we need to build it in for next year's? Um, or, or do we need to find grant money for it? I guess that was the third thing.
What part?
Any part.
If we can find grant money, yes.
I'm always looking for grants.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm always going to be doing that.
So we have. Approved the expenditure for the security, right? Or we talked about it that JP brought up. I think we authorized that, you know, that'll probably come out of capital improvement.
Yes. Okay.
That was fun. So they can continue with the building.
The other thing we, uh, Ted, we've been. Looking at is an APIS machine, which is basically it's a glorified fingerprint machine.
Oh, yes.
It is the one to roll it in there and you can tell who people are and what they've done and any records they have if they've been arrested. Costs like eighteen thousand dollars for the thing that it's a, was it three thousand dollars a year to?
So it's eighteen, five for the cabinet. It's another thirteen hundred for the printer. And then it's three thousand a year in maintenance after the first year. So it is not cheap.
Do they have one down the street that you can visit on your way to the station?
Barracks has one, um, would. Kind of defeat the purpose of having put money into a processing area. If we have to process at the barracks and then put them back in the cruiser to bring them up to our station to.
Sure. I mean, another thing is this, uh, when you go to the Rollin Town School, who do you get to do fingerprints for the, the teachers and the parents and everything else that want to?
Field trips.
The sheriffs, the field trips. How hard, how difficult and how much it costs the people to get their fingerprints?
Yeah, I did it once years ago and it was not difficult. And I don't think it was expensive. So.
Right now it's hard to get an appointment to get in there. I'm just saying it's hard to get an appointment. This would give us another location.
So was there any funding out there for that? Or is that something that'd be pretty much on us?
So I haven't found any grants for anything like that.
Okay.
The state used to provide them, but obviously with the cost went up, they said, we're not doing that anymore.
And I guess that wouldn't, we couldn't use our corcida funds. Would that be, you know, we have some funds there that.
Yeah.
That's how much we have right now.
Most of the fingerprints are taken from.
You know, I mean.
If we're talking longer term and.
Would, would that be, I mean, those are our funds to use for our PD. In whatever capacity and, and if we're, has those funds available. I would.
So do you want the police committee to look at this then, or do you want to vote on it right?
No, no. I mean, I'm just putting out options. So you guys, if you have a committee meeting and decide what you want to do and then come back and tell us.
I mean, fingerprinting is kind of the backbone in the police department.
Yeah. And.
Maybe we could charge for fingerprinting. Or other municipalities.
It's, it's just funny. My son-in-law's workshop, I looked into.
I have a suggestion.
Thirteen or fifteen thousand. And, and they asked him about fingerprinting. Fingerprints were in the system. But in a good way, you know, not in a bad way, but it's, once you have some of this stuff, it's invaluable for you guys. Record keep.
Okay. So we're going to be scheduling police committee anyway to go over. The new hire in executive session and we can put it at the same time to look at the fingerprinting system. And where the money might come from. But that's, we did want you to continue to think about things that were not covered under the construction funds for the new public safety buildings. So.
Right. Cause we, we don't know if we aren't told. I mean, you know, I've heard complaints from different people, but we can't make, we can't. We're not magicians. And if you don't tell us whether it's the fire department or the police department, then we can't. You know.
I did have some good news. I got all Mary. Weeks ago in reference to the Greenmount Plaza, there's a store looking to move into where the Halloween stores after that thing, they may move in. Time will tell. They didn't give me a guarantee. They want to know if crime with here was as bad as it was in Burlington. And I said, I don't think so.
There yesterday, wasn't it? In Burlington.
I'm sure they did.
I'm sure they did.
Yeah, some. Female shot.
Heard about that. So that's, uh, some good news. Hopefully they. They decide to come here.
Yeah. Well, and, and I appreciate what you did, which is kind of sitting down with them and going through. Security measures that would be helpful.
It was a security person from the store that wants to move in there. They didn't tell me it wasn't. I couldn't say anything. So it's, it was a affiliate of TJ Maxx, the home line thing. We talked about that, uh, what it looked like. I did talk about. Probably they should lock up the stuff that keeps people warm for their home encampments that they want to, you know, he said they. probably they should lock up the stuff that keeps people warm for their home encampments that they want to, you know, he said they, they've already done it up up in Burlington. And this, if they put one down here, it'd be the second one in Vermont. So it would be quite, I think it'd be quite busy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very busy.
Yep.
I mean, they know what they're, they know the situ, you've explained the situation.
Right. I was honest. I told them what was.
We don't, you don't wanna chase business away, but you don't want them to
Right.
Come in here and get, you know, blindsided by a problem that.
I did offer up our services, the department, we all, if they went there the first week, I'd try to give them coverage when they open until they close the first week.
Anything you can carry out of there needs to keep an eye on. Stuff that's too heavy to move, then probably is safe.
Yeah.
Don't underestimate them.
Yeah, it's a little bit more obvious, so.
Okay, anything else for our police department other than a police committee meeting?
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
Okay, John Paul Pignut. Town health officer, public safety building clerk and second constable. Which one do you wanna start with?
So let's go with the building first because as we're closing in on probably an eight week window to occupy the building.
Wow.
I wanna thank the board for coming and looking at the building last week. I, I think it helped you get a perspective of how much we really did gain by taking that back lot under this current umbrella. Um, I wanna throw some numbers at you uh just so you have a general idea of where we're at, but I'd also like to request at your convenience that you schedule a committee of the whole so we can fine tune these numbers. Um, but I can give you uh just a thumbnail sketch of the additional stuff. It, as you recall, when we originally contemplated this building, we were going to try and do what we're doing now, which was to feather this stuff in on an ongoing basis rather than try and pay for it all upfront. But for example, a fire chief office is gonna need a chair, desk, computer, telephone, radio, and it's where the electric door openers will be. We need the same equipment for the assistant chief's office. We're gonna need two servers, one for the police department, one for the fire department. We're gonna need miscellaneous items like fire extinguishers and cabinets to be placed according to code. In the fire department parking garage, we need a hoist and an air compressor. Um, in the apparatus bay, we need flammable safety cabinet. In the decon room, we're gonna need a domestic washer, domestic dryer, extractor and a six gear express dryer. In the server room, we'll need a server cabinets. That's gonna be about a sixty-five hundred dollar item just for two server cabinets. In the emergency management center, we're gonna need a conference table, chairs, need a refrigerator, a range with an oven, a microwave, telephone, range hood and a dishwasher. Those appliances are mandated in order to keep the emergency management center designation for which we received a grant.
Right.
Um, in the administrative office for the PD, we're gonna need um desk, chair, cabinets, computer, telephone, copy printer. The police chief's gonna need desk, chairs, computer, telephone. The deputy chief will need the same. The patrol room will need to be outfitted pretty much with file cabinets. We have a cost for the uh computer workstations times four for the officers. That's gonna be about thirty-five hundred dollars. Um, in the interview room, we're gonna need table, chairs, telephone. In the evidence room, similar, we need shelving, the evidence locker, a computer. In the process room, we'll need a workbench, laptop, telephone. In the interview room, we're gonna need table, chairs, telephone. In the holding room, we'll need a steel bench that's already been ordered and that's included. In the armory room, we're gonna need an ammo cabinet and a gun cabinet. Uh, the Sally Port and the police garage will have air hoses and things to be able to work on the vehicles. And in the apparatus bay, we need flammable safety cabinet and a rolling platform ladder. So those are the things that I've identified today. Unfortunately, one of them has taken on some urgency because we're kind of being treated like a second child by one of our vendors, but uh much to our chagrin, Royals has not ordered the stuff according to their plan um because they neglected to tell us that we need to pay upfront a deposit before they'll order it. So now we're behind the eight ball. I do have two invoices which represent the total cost for the locks and the cameras, the security system. The uh they're looking for uh forty-one thousand eight hundred and forty dollar deposit on the cameras and that's towards a total cost of about forty-nine thousand. And on the locks, they're looking for a deposit of twelve thousand three hundred and thirty-four against a total cost of locks of about nineteen thousand. So I would be asking for you to approve the two deposit invoices today, which I can, I'll, I'll bring by to Carrie tomorrow um so that we can get them a check on Thursday and get this stuff ordered because uh obviously it was a rude surprise to us, but they've apparently had a bad experience with the municipality and they're requiring prepay on this stuff. So.
And it wasn't our municipality.
No, no, it had nothing to do with us.
It's kind of funny because we've done business with them for the last ten or fifteen years.
It, it, which is why we were caught by surprise when they said, oh no, we're waiting for a deposit. We're like, oh.
So this is outside the cost of.
This is the uh security grant that didn't go through that you approved. The total cost is seventy grand.
Okay.
Um, and so this would be the deposit towards that work. So we can get this stuff ordered cuz this, obviously, these are critical systems for the building.
Okay, um. Any motion?
I moved to authorize that down payment um expenditures is outlined by JP.
So forty-one, eight forty for the deposit on the cameras.
Forty-one, eight forty, ninety-one.
Oh, excuse me.
And send them just that.
Twelve thousand, three.
Just that amount. No, right. We don't pay for the rest of it until it's in.
No.
And the other, the lock system is uh the deposit is twelve thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-six cents.
Twenty-six cents. Okay, I'm glad.
Yeah.
Now, there was a question at the inspection, but the steel lockers for the fire department are included in the bid. They're provided by the contractor.
Good.
So we can take that off our plate.
Okay.
JP, I don't, before you get too far, you, you mentioned about an air compressor, right?
Yeah.
We need, we've got a motion. Did we get a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so motion's made and seconded to approve the deposits on the cameras and the locks to royal class.
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anybody opposed? Okay, everybody approves.
Alright, so I'll get these two invoices to Carrie first thing in the morning and, and she can process those.
And.
Can I interrupt for a second?
Yeah, sure.
Um, what line and what fund? Like, where's the money from?
Picky, picky.
This was a separate, this is not part of what we, it's not part of the uh bond. Funds. This was a separate appropriation that we agreed to a meeting or two ago. And it was out of capital improvement fund.
Okay, so is this outside of the money that we asked the voters for, for, from the capital improvements?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Okay.
It'll be in this. We need, we need to put this sticky note on your door, Carrie.
No, I still have that sticky note. Okay, just wanted to know that.
Okay, so I had just a question, JP, before you go too much further on your list. You mentioned an air compressor. Is that for the fire department?
Yes.
Where's the old one?
Where's the one?
I got it.
I was gonna say, didn't you get a relatively new one? You saved that one out of McKinley, right?
Uh, I, I haven't come full circle on this stuff. I'm giving you the worst case scenario.
Alright, well, I'm just mentioning it because I knew that they had replaced the one that was there with a newer one and I was hoping you kept it.
Yeah.
Okay, cuz when we moved out of center, we upgraded because we got rid of the thirty-five or forty-year-old one and, and, but they've already done that one.
So there's a lot of things there that we may already have.
Well, if uh when I'm done, I'll explain all that to you.
Okay.
And the lockers, we do, the lockers are built into the contract. Okay. Um, and on the police side, you've outlined things that it sounds like we've got some of the desks downstairs.
We have, um, well, let me finish this and then I'll explain to you how we can dovetail all that other stuff. So we've identified just about fourteen thousand dollars worth of stuff that we will need in addition to what we already have. For example, we've got three desks in the police department. We'll be reusing those. We have the compressor. So we have a lot of this stuff collected already. I'm giving you the ten thousand foot view of where we're at now and we'll be able to skinny this list and this expense down as we, for example, Ted did a, an amazing job working with La Valley. Because to spec out that kitchen in the emergency management center was about seven grand, sixty-nine hundred dollars. And because it is what it is and it's for the town, um, we got a price of thirty-two eighty-five for that, which, you know, that's huge for, for us to be able to save that kind of money. With regard to the site revisions, the total cost right now is about seventy thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. I'm looking to get some credits on that, but that's pretty much in line with what, we, we had an estimate of fifty-one thousand. I think this number should be closer to sixty, but I'll get back with those folks on that.
And this, the site revisions are the extension and back?
Yes.
Okay.
And all of that, seventy thousand. Yeah, it really was. I mean, that was a great, great get, Joe.
That and the fact of the guys from M and M soils, he had a pretty good input on that meeting about how to make that bank look different.
Yeah.
And, and how to um maximize the property and then utilize the space out back.
Yeah. And then the big ticket item you've kind of talked about would be the APIS fingerprint machine, which is kind of a critical component for police uh operations. Um, with regard to the two servers, we're uh total with the uh the server cabinet, the backup, the battery, the ethernet patch, the cables, the ethernet switch, the server cabinet shelf, the monitor and mount, miscellaneous cables is uh for the two departments is seventy-one hundred dollars. Um, so we have a, a pretty good number in that and that's included in that original estimate about fifty grand that we're looking at with the tables and the chairs and the cabinets and stuff, which I expect will come down once I'm able to inventory what we have, match it against what we need and then show you the difference.
Okay. So this is continues to be a work in progress and you don't, do you need anything approved very quickly?
Do you guys think of anything? I, I think we're pretty much.
We are, we had a couple uh things on the uh electrical disconnects that we didn't see in the compressor room.
Yeah.
I don't know if they haven't got to that yet or what.
Yeah.
If you could check on that one and.
What was that again, Larry?
Compressor room.
Yeah.
Disconnect box, electrical disconnect box. And in the room with the washers and dryers in there.
Yeah.
We found one, one twenty in there for a dryer, a small dryer.
No, two forty.
Dryer, the wire seems awful small.
No, two forty? You didn't say two forty?
Yes.
There was.
We need two of them.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions for you. Can I sit up there?
Yeah, come on.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dell, why don't you pull a chair too so that you guys can tell us exactly what?
It's nothing major. I just walked through there. So truck air compressor for the air to the truck itself. We have the compressor. Where is that thing sitting? I asked the electrician. He thinks it's in the pickup bay, which is no good. Can we put it in the compressor room?
Could be in the, you have a mechanical room?
We do.
Like, yeah, isn't that where centers is?
Yeah, but we have a compressor.
You have a compressor room separate?
Yeah.
Cascadesism, so you could put them both together, you think?
But like the plumbing for it, was that ever included? You know, plumbing across the ceiling and put a drop down so they can plug the trucks in?
Yeah, I know. Everything that we need to operate is supposed to be included. What I've covered tonight, according to the plans and specifications, are the only owner supplied items. Everything else comes with the building.
Right. I just don't know if it was put in there.
Alright.
Anyway.
So it would be.
This is just stuff that I see that's missing. And I know they're not done yet, but.
Right.
Like cord drops, electrical cords to plug the trucks in.
Right.
They'll be there.
Yep. Those are contractor supplied.
Gear washer, we talked about.
Airs, airs contractor supplied.
The electrician asked me about hose tower lights. I have no idea what was in the specs.
Yep.
Uh, there's supposed to be lights above the garage doors, just like center route one. I don't see a wire sticking out. I'm sure it'll be there, but uh water to all the garage doors for washing the trucks, that was all in there. Or it's not there, but I'm just wanna make sure it's there. Uh, the sewer pump, which is down by the police barracks. I know there's a pipe in the ground somewhere. I don't know where it is cuz I haven't seen it, but I'm pretty sure they put that in, right?
They waited.
They put conduit in to wire it up later. It's not part of this project.
Right, I, I understand that. I'm just making sure it's there.
Oh, yeah. No, it is. It's been installed.
I don't know where it is.
So it, it daylights right on that uh east southeast corner of the lot, right where the pole is.
Alright.
Um, Bill, just as, because this is exactly the specificity we asked for, could you please make sure the minutes have all of this in detail? They'll be horrendous minutes, but they'll be really good for reference. So, thank you.
And the sewer pump this is going to in the future is by the police barracks. It's not post road.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Somebody asked me, why would you dig up or Route seven? I'm like, I.
No, it's, it's that one down there because we, we pay for that already. That's already part of ours.
Uh, guard really already talked about overhead doors. Um, I see the openers are up there.
Yep.
Is this a drive around station?
Not yet.
Is it going to be? Maybe.
We'll see.
For a pickup, not a fire truck.
Not a fire truck.
I think once they leave, we can do what we want with that around the building. But the fact that they changed the slope from the police station side out so that relatively level. Originally, there was barely walking room around there.
Right.
So the, so the grade that's there now is kind of what's gonna be left. So they've been running equipment on it for ten months.
Yeah.
It'll be well compacted. It's, it's designated, I think, as lawn now. But we can.
And a while ago, Gary asked me about propane tanks on the east side, I believe. There's about twenty feet of stone. I call Procter gas just for a question. I have no idea where you're getting fuel from, but.
That'll come later in the meeting, but we um.
Probably Procter gas.
Yeah.
So what did Procter say?
Well, they said, well, whoever usually is the supplier will tell you how to set the tank. They're asking me if they need to be tied down. I, I don't think it's a floodplain being up that high, but I, I wasn't.
I think they always have to, the tanks have to be secured.
They have to be secured, but I did take the credit on the concrete paths, which are only required if it's in a flood zone, which this is not. So that saves us about thirty-five.
And I think they moved, they moved the tanks from us from the west side of the building to the east side to accommodate the additional parking. So they're gonna be on that northeast corner somewhere, which depending on where they locate those, may prohibit driving around the building cuz you can't drive over the tank. Um, but the generator this time is diesel and not propane. So. And that has the extended run fuel tank. That's why it sets up so high. That's the six hundred gallon tank.
We're gonna have to figure out some sort of management plan for that cuz six hundred gallons of fuel is gonna go stale on that tank.
Yeah.
We'll put it in the fire truck and.
My thought was eventually we'll hook a pump to the side of that and then fill our fire trucks off it.
If they put undyed fuel on it.
You run undyed too. You can ride that, run dyed fuel as a municipality.
So that's one of the problems with the big tank. They need to be circulated and, and they'll need to have additive. I think I mentioned this to you guys. You gotta put some kind of fuel supplement in all the trucks cuz of the no lubrication in the
Right.
Fuel nowadays. It's good for you to remember at the ranch too. But anyway.
And my last thing on the box is a lock box.
For the police department.
Which now the siding is already on.
A notch box.
Be a little late.
For the police department. So if there's problems at night, you'll call us and we'll let you.
Yeah.
You can keep the key to the evidence room. You're gonna be called, but we gotta get in there. So we're gonna have to have a notch box put up.
Yep.
Thank you.
The, the one that's on the.
So there's no interconnection between the police department and the fire department?
No.
FBI says no.
There must be a divide.
The FBI can pay for it then.
The um, the old Cheney Hill school, you know, there's a lock box on that.
I do.
Did you ever go up and ask them if they want it? Or if we.
I actually talked to that guy on the phone. This was quite a while ago and he. Or if we actually talked to that guy on the phone. This was quite a while ago and he said they would like to keep it. So it's still there.
I was just curious if, you know, did they put updated keys in it for you?
Uh, that I don't know. He's supposed to call me and he never did.
Cause I, cause we paid for that when that was a town building. The fire department paid for that log box and if they weren't using it, we should get it back. But if they're using it, because then you could just put it on the building over there for.
I did put one in Starbucks the other day, so just to let you know.
Okay.
They're gonna open soon. And, uh, we're gonna save a little money for the chief desk because Mary said I could have one of these.
Middle ones, the nicer ones. See the, the way the wood has the grain in it?
You know, I'll deliver it.
We can't get these anymore.
I know. Vermont prison industry stood all of these and they're out of business. What? Railroad desk.
There, there's several desks downstairs, I think, for you guys, right?
If Kurt doesn't get.
So make sure you let us know and let him know what you need and what you don't have.
This is what.
Cause we're not magicians.
Okay, here we go.
A gear extractor and gear dryer is twenty three thousand, five hundred and thirty seven dollars and sixty six cents. Which is all plumbed for it. Um, just not in the, the building fund.
Say that again.
What's that?
Does that have the electrical?
That's, uh, got all the electrical, all the water already plumbed in.
Okay, yeah.
Twenty three thousand.
Yeah.
Five hundred and thirty seven.
That's for both parts.
It's for both parts, yeah.
Yeah.
Chris, does that, does that dryer go to a certain temperature? Yeah, just, just watch. We, we bought one down. The stupid thing only goes like ten degrees above the ambient air temperature.
Yep.
No, no. So just make, just make sure that because it doesn't work that great.
Right.
Just got the extractor price.
The one, the one that.
Uh, one of them is.
Extractor, that works good.
Yeah. And those things are already.
Extractor. Seven, four.
You've got all the paperwork.
There's no dryer over there.
And then the other one is fourteen, three fifty five.
Yep.
This, okay, are these things that need to be approved so you can order them?
Yes.
And is that a, we need to approve it tonight thing?
Um, these are fresh quotes.
Okay.
Um. September twenty first.
Are these preferred vendors?
Yep.
Okay.
Get all our stuff.
Yeah.
So let's, um.
I know this was pretty high. The dryer is make sure it goes higher because the one, the one we bought goes like ten degrees above the ambient air temperature of the room, which doesn't work worth crap. So just make sure that one like goes to a set temperature of like a hundred degrees or like an actual dryer.
One ten.
One ten, alright. Just some, just something to.
Yeah, well, look.
Just from, learning from experience.
We just bought the extractor for.
Right. And this extractor does six sets of gear. The one down there does one. So this one's bigger, obviously.
Okay, so if you want a motion tonight so we can get it ordered.
We're not done yet.
Yeah.
I was trying to shut you up, but no, go ahead.
You can't shut Dell up.
This is for the, uh, compressor to fill air tanks, air bottles for your CBAs.
The compressor room that's already there?
Same company Reynolds valid through October twenty first. Is grand total of eighty five thousand, two hundred and seventy two dollars and forty cents.
It's the cascade system.
Yeah.
So when you said grand total of, that's just the cascade.
Correct.
Okay, and then we need to add so the extractor.
It's a hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and six cents.
Fingerprint machine was expensive.
We're gonna get the fingerprint machine instead.
We figured everybody was asking.
The cascade system now, or is that something you?
I mean, we've never had one, so I mean, it's not super important, but I know people keep saying, well, just go a mile and a half down the street, but why are we going on the new fire station if we can go a mile and a half?
I mean, I just.
No, uh, we're in an open meeting right now. Let's have the discussion afterwards with the police. And we'll. We'll, we'll, we'll explain why.
I was gonna say, I mean, if we need to order.
So you're talking executive session? Is that what you're?
Not unless, not.
To do that.
Not unless it meets one of the criteria if it's. Yeah.
What are we talking about?
I just don't.
If it jeopardizes, you know, if you, it would have to be something that has contractual implications or something.
Or a personnel as opposed to personality issue.
That year, yes, uh.
Okay.
With other departments.
Yes.
The, the, the extractor now, will Reynolds come and install it? Or does that have to be installed by, or is that a work in there now? Oh.
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, because it shouldn't be a lot. It should just be wiring and plumbing.
Okay, I was a little slow writing down, so let's do the numbers one more time. Reynolds for all of them, right?
Reynolds for all three items is.
And their preferred vendor.
Yeah.
Let's do them individually. The extractor.
The extractor is seven thousand, seven hundred and forty three dollars and seventy eight cents.
Okay, and the.
Dryer is fourteen thousand, three hundred and fifty five dollars.
No sense?
No sense.
I had sixty six cents.
Sixty six cents?
It says zero cents right here, so I'm not sure what you got.
Zero cents.
Sixty six.
Okay, so we just say sixty six cents. Let's keep going.
Uh, for the extractor.
I thought we just got the extractor.
Or not the extractor, the compressor, sorry.
Okay.
Now, that's a complete system.
It is.
And everything you need.
Yeah.
Everyone works in a drawer, everything.
Three phase motor on it. We gotta get some use out of all that money we spent on three phase.
Doesn't say three phase. Eighty five thousand, two hundred and seventy two dollars and forty cents.
Okay, for a grand total of?
Grand total of one hundred and eight thousand.
Yeah.
Eight hundred and ten dollars and six cents.
You tried to get a grant for that compressor, didn't you?
For, yeah, and the extractor.
Any, any reason why they turned us down?
Too rich. There's, there's fire departments out there operating on apparently no budgets.
I think it's because we didn't apply twice, right?
Yeah. So last year when I applied for everything, we got considered a low priority town because the cascade system itself was considered low priority. And this year when I applied, I applied in February for just the cast, not cast, washer, dryer, tractor, submitted the grant. Got an email a week later that said, make sure you submit your grant. Though reminded me, I said, well, I did submit the grant, submitted it in February. Months go by, I call FEMA, say, hey, where's our standing on this grant? They said you didn't apply. So I did. Here's my proof. They looked, they said, yep, you applied to the FEMA system, but you had to apply a second time when we sent you that reminder to apply. So it went to this side of the house. So I got denied for applying, but not applying.
That was for the extractor.
Once we pay for this ourselves, we won't be able to apply for a grant for reimbursement.
So here's the, here's the next thing, and Kurt, being an officer down there, OSHA. If they pass this law, which they're gonna pass some of it, they may not pass all of it. You're gonna need this stuff. So after every fire, you're gonna have to wash your gear.
Because you don't want to be caring.
After a CO call, you're gonna have to wash your gear. You're gonna have to clean the inside of that truck in and out. The gear, we're gonna have to replace every five years.
We're on that schedule now, right, Chris?
You're on a five years, Chris.
We do ten.
We do ten right now. They, with them, it's, uh, gonna be five years.
It get ridiculous.
Training, physicals and stuff like that. Again, I don't know if this is all gonna pass. Nobody does.
Right.
They've been tested, testifying in Congress to dump this. Not, we'll probably get part of it, but.
This is OSHA too, not NFPA, right?
Right. Yeah, this is OSHA.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got a total and we've got it broken down. Is there any motion? And, you know, we can keep discussing, but there probably should be a motion.
I move, we purchase the gear extractor and the dryer for the fire department from the capital improvement fund. The cascade system, I'd like to see where we're at, at the end of this whole thing. I know that capital improvement fund, we're still trying to see exactly where all the money is. So I want to make sure we're not doing something wild. But definitely want to get a cascade system, whether we put in a budget for next year into equipment line or what, what we do.
Rather not put anything on the ballot, but.
Yeah, I think that's, okay, so motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to purchase the extractor and the dryer, uh, for the amount stated seventy seven, forty three, seventy eight and fourteen, three fifty five, zero, zero. Discussion now.
So I agree with the priorities as Kurt stated. Uh, I just wonder, uh, if we wait a few months, what are the odds that we actually get the grant? Because it gets submitted to whichever way they want it done. Is that, is that likely? I mean, because if it's likely.
It's no guarantee that next year when they open up that washers and extractors are gonna be a high priority item.
No, I meant, well, if we pay for the washer and dryer, if we try to get a grant for the cascade system.
I, yeah, again, a little bit.
I mean, I, I, like Kurt said, I'd, I'd like to see it there, but I think.
Washer's more important to me.
Right now.
For sure. I agree.
Yeah, because, because you have act, I mean, the city will fill bottles like they have for the.
They have.
Seven years. You know, yeah, whatever, and they're.
Yeah, that's a county.
Yeah, that's a county system.
Yeah, that's a county cascade system.
Ted, I don't.
That is no more. When we had the, uh, the older one, because I was involved in that, I'm the one that started that. We had it, it was for the whole county, right? And then when we got rid of that, Courtney took it. We bought that Bauer system in there. The city paid for that themselves, so.
So would they no longer have to fill our tanks?
They will fill our tanks.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll never say.
But when you're going there in the middle of the night.
Yeah.
Stuff getting.
Okay.
So, um, it gets a little touchy.
Okay.
Our dog is finding their drugs.
Having a second system.
Boy.
Yeah.
Because you guys are gonna get called.
Right.
To go fill somebody else's bottles or at a big fire. It's not gonna be a bad idea to have two places being in, because you can only fill them so fast.
Right.
Yeah. And, and I see nights where we've run out and couldn't get them filled faster because you can't fill them fast there, so, but anyway.
So the pending motion is for the extre- extractor and the dryer. Right, okay, so are you ready to vote on that one? And where, where's it gonna come from? Capital improvement, capital improvement fund?
Was there some better suggestion?
Yeah, no, that's what it's.
Okay, so motion's been made and seconded. Discussion's been had. All in favor of paying for those two items and from the capital improvement fund to preferred vendor Reynolds. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. You're welcome. Um, to make sure the town clerk knows that, yeah.
I see her on the internet.
Stick, stick a note on the door. It's the new procedure.
On that cascade system anywhere. You have the specs on the cascade system. I'm just curious, Chris, because I, I want to see us get some use out of that three phase power. That cost the town over a hundred thousand dollars to change the power or more.
Yeah. Oh, no, it says single, oh, it says single or three phase.
This, this is my whole point.
I don't know what this, I don't know what the price is for though.
Okay.
Three phase will use, it will cost less to run, but.
So we're not doing anything with cascade tonight?
So JP?
Okay.
He's got all this stuff on the dryers and the extractor and stuff. That's hope. He came up with all the specs for everything.
Yeah, I'd rather you guys.
Okay.
Any other questions for JP or, oh, Bill?
On your desk is the builder's risk insurance policy renewal, which is happening next month.
Which? Oh, okay. Builders' risk policy for the public safety building, they will refund on a prorata basis when we cancel it. And the amount is, this is the premium, ten thousand, five fifty, five fifty seven. And question, uh, what account should this come from?
It's gonna renew next month. We will get an invoice for it, but we should be prepared when it gets here.
Okay, well, we should probably just go ahead and make sure it's covered.
Yeah. Well, it, you know, we're covered through September, so.
What do we pay for it last?
That's, that's the premium, yeah.
Now, what do we pay? What fund? Do you know? We might have paid it as part of the soft costs.
Yeah, I think that was part of the, and we've used up most of those.
But I did ask, I did ask the league and they said, when the date we cancel it, we'll get a portion back, so.
Okay.
Because the building's gonna take longer than a year.
I don't know, what's, what's thoroughly done? Where do we take the money for this? I know we don't do it that often, but.
It's kind of an operating expense, like.
We got a line item in.
Can't really capitalize it, I don't think.
No, we can't.
We have a, we have an insurance line in the general fund?
I think we do in the general fund.
Yeah, well, there it is.
So. On the cascade system. Do you feel that?
I think it's because of the original policy. In the building, it's thirteen months.
So you need to speak up.
I, I think.
Can't pay month.
It's just gonna cost more.
Well, that's, that's my concern.
General insurance, whoa.
It is.
Um, that is a hundred and forty eight thousand dollar budget. Up from a hundred and ten. So we do have a line, uh, general insurance line in the general budget. And that could be used to pay the renewal. What's the, uh, what's your, how about a motion?
I already, I made the last one. Somebody else can make this one.
Pay for the renewal out of the insurance line.
Okay, so motion's been made, seconded by, by Matt, seconded by Sharon to pay for the builder's risk policy for the public safety building out of the general insurance line in our budget. And the amount is ten thousand, five fifty seven, and there should be a prorata refund.
That goes back into the same one.
Yes.
I'm sure there was an increase. That's why we went up that much. So we're probably gonna be short.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there more discussion? This is the insurance policy. If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Um, that takes care of that and, let's see, approved.
JP, one more thing, I forgot to write on this.
Of.
Dryer vents.
General insurance.
Really appreciate.
And this should be itemized for the minutes too, please? Okay. Um. Okay, anything else for public safety building?
Just the one question you asked at the outset. And so in January of this year, the, uh, company that was supposed to be providing the siding for the barn part of the building uh, got in touch with the contractor and said, you're not gonna like the way this fades. It doesn't fade uniformly. It's gonna look splotchy and we really don't want to sell it to you for that purpose. So the architect came to me and said, what do you want to do? And I said, well, you're the architect. Could you maybe come to a complimentary color in your office that you could recommend for us? And so the color you see was the number one choice of the architect's office for complimentary color.
And the painter across the street agrees, right?
And, and the neighbors love it, so.
Okay, so.
It still looks like the building's unfinished. I, I keep, I keep waiting for them to put something.
And they keep telling me, when the trim is all up, you'll see, you'll see. And they keep telling me, when the trim is all up, you'll see, you'll see.
Looks like green styrofoam insulation.
So here's.
There's no accounting for taste.
Not appealing.
We have not talked about one thing that could tie the colors together, and that's a sign. Are we having some kind of a sign going on that? Rutland Town Fire Police.
On the building itself, it says Rutland on the front, it's gonna say Rutland Town Public Safety Building.
Okay.
And then the police will be separately signed.
Okay. Uh, my point is that sometimes you can use a sign to pull colors together.
Right, exactly.
So.
Building like center.
Yeah, okay.
We were also thinking like back at the old station, it used to say what truck went in your garage door. You know, make it.
The Maltese cross up there and stuff like that.
We did it on center with the. The town patch that.
Never decided.
That's a great. You gotta.
Yeah.
Somewhere on the building that that would kind of look kind of nicer.
And one other thing I thought of, is there a flagpole?
I was just gonna say that. Talking about, I'm like, I wonder if there's gonna be a flagpole. I was just thinking.
There should be a flagpole.
There has to be a flagpole. The the only unknown left on the site right now is the fear that there's a vein of ledge underneath the construction trailer.
You mentioned that.
And that's where the flagpole was gonna be going in that corner of the lot, so we're gonna wait to see how that all ferrets out.
Okay, so is back to, is the sign part of the construction cost?
Yes, the the lettering on the building is included in the contract.
The extra stuff.
That's on the red, right?
Yes.
Well, yeah, that's on the red.
There's not much green on the front. Yeah, but there isn't that much on the front, a little bit, you know.
And is the flagpole part of the cost?
Yes.
Okay, as long as they don't have to blast ledge or something, yeah.
Was there something on the tower too? The host tower, there was lettering Rutland Town.
I don't remember.
I got it on my prints.
Oh, if it's on the prints, yeah.
Well, they're not prints, they're the drawings they gave.
I'll check the plan and see if it made it to the construction drawings.
So have we pretty much got everything?
For tonight, but I'd like you to consider a a meeting of the committee of a whole, so we don't have to take up your meeting time and that we can fine tune these numbers.
Okay.
Maybe in the next couple of weeks, it doesn't have to be the next, you know, maybe the next three, four weeks.
Okay.
That list I gave you JP the other day.
Yep.
Did you get any answers?
I did.
So, and so we can either do it before the meeting. We can do it on in between week if you want, or we can do it before the meeting on the. Twenty-fourth.
If we do the twenty-fourth, that'll give me two weeks to really get the numbers together for you.
Okay, do you want to do it, say at five o'clock on the twenty-fourth?
Sure.
How's five? You just cringed.
I keep hoping.
What, hang?
Yeah, keep hoping, you know, some.
So to your questions that you had, um, we can fill the generator at startup when the manufacturer comes to do the startup. That's when you can do, uh, copper phone lines, uh, are they included for the FD fax machine? I gotta ask the electrician, they didn't know the answer to that question, I haven't been able to get with the electrician. But the alarm system is compatible with that VOIP that you were asking about. But they asked me to confirm that with Royals, which I have not done yet. Um, the server racks are are being installed in the server room when we get them. So we'll proceed to order the stuff that we've identified to you as absolutely necessary. And present that to you as it comes in and we'll be supplementing with what we have here. So that in two weeks, I'll be able to show you how everything fits together. Um, and your last question was, uh, when can consolidation plan to install the hardware? Uh, the general contractors being in touch with them, uh, Bill Sweet's been in touch with them and we're. We're pushing that button as many times as we can to get that attention from them. They they have to come and move their lines off the poles and, um. That'd be a really big first step.
Usually is, okay.
So the one hour, is that enough? To firm up these numbers?
It's it's enough for us to.
Okay.
Yeah, to to for you guys to get a good handle on where we're at.
Okay, so it looks like we can do that on, uh, September twenty-fourth. Do you want two weeks or four weeks?
I don't want four weeks.
Okay, so.
That'll be four weeks.
That would be, uh, September tenth.
It's two weeks.
It's two weeks, yes.
Does he want four or two?
No, you just said two.
I can live with two.
Okay, Matt is the two, two weeks, okay with you?
Chris, was that, was that Red Phone still active in the communication? Is that gonna go back in there?
It's still down here too.
I know one other thing that I didn't see.
Going back in.
And that number's still active, so you can still call that number?
Yep.
I was just curious.
That's why we had two phone lines.
A, and I I didn't hear it in any of the things here, um, some kind of a display or a display area. A bulletin board, something for all of those things that police and fire departments have, including. Uh, I will say some of the former firefighters, the founding firefighters. Cuz that was up at McKinley, I think. Did it get moved over to center?
The founding members are on the side of the truck.
That's right, I have seen that, but there were, there were photos, there were some photos and there was. Okay, I would like to see a display, I've got a perfectly legit reason, my husband was one of them. So I would really like to see some kind of a display, doesn't have to be elaborate, but just kind of build that into your thinking.
We didn't put a trophy case in this one like we did at center.
I don't believe so. Gonna hang pictures up in Marty's room.
What's that?
We're gonna hang all the pictures in Marty's room.
Okay.
And like I had made down in center and like, uh, I don't know if anybody's been in there, but like all the lieutenants are on one. From day one, all the. Assistant Chiefs, Chiefs.
It should be the same with the police department.
I'm gonna copy those and.
Okay. All right.
That should be pretty easy to make.
So if we're gonna be asked to approve a large expenditure on the tent, I wonder if maybe Kerry could, you know, be be present and or. Have a the latest on the capital improvement fund balance at that point.
Yeah.
Or lack thereof.
Yeah, I think we're gonna be okay, but I like to stay on top of that as we start getting into like six meter territory.
Everything that we had over.
Um, Kerry, is it possible we can get? A a close to final or a final determination, so we feel comfortable about paying for these. Items on September tenth out of the capital fund?
Guarantee she left her phone in the other room, she's doing something.
Okay, sorry, we. Did you hear the question? Um, no, it was in the. So is it possible by September tenth to have a definitive number for what's in the capital fund? So when, um, we're asked to approve these expenditures for the interior stuff of the public safety building. Will feel comfortable that we have the money to pay for them? Yes. Yes, I will, I'll have it ready. Great, thank you, okay. Now, anything else? Public safety building, fire?
Question.
Or police, and I've got one for you, but you go first.
Washer dryer is like, it's a go, like.
Washer dryer, the extractor and the.
I can order that.
There, yes. And my question for you, have have we done enough tonight, so you won't take my desk?
Loaded up tonight, actually.
Nice, stick around, I'll give you a head.
Thank you guys very much. All right, next on our agenda, so we took a builder's risk policy. Um, did John Paul? Um, Barbara.
No Barbara.
No Barbara. So we've done Chris, Chris, have we done you for everything tonight? Chris Clark? Are, have you done our, the whole fire report?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay.
Chris, you were going to, uh, poll the guys about. The pickup.
Everybody so far, it's just me that's interested, but I'm gonna send out a group email. I asked all the people that actually show up.
You want us to hold off for a little longer?
What do you mean, hold off?
As far as who we sell it to?
Oh, yeah, I'll have it.
Okay, all right, please. That was the only thing that was pending.
That's good. And Larry, do you have anything else?
Yeah.
Mr. Del Veneri? Are you, are you, have you given your report or do you want?
Yeah, he's there.
Okay.
I'll be right back.
Okay.
How much is that like?
Do you want my desk too? Thank you.
Probably more user friendly. The pool is closed, covered. Do a good job. Uh, shout out to Dave, we couldn't get one of the ladders, there's always a ladder that gets a little tricky, it just kind of gets hydraulics in. And I don't know if Dave's telling the truth or not, I had three lifeguards and a couple, we usually use two I fours, try to pry that sucker out of there and. He claims he did it in three minutes with him and Ben, so. If he did, all the kudos, he got it out, and which is awesome, and I thank.
Can tell you which truck he used.
Ladder, so it, it didn't get damaged, so. Yeah, exactly, I was gonna use the forks on the tractor, but I just didn't. So that's all, put the rest, thanks to everybody who did the townwide celebration, came or whatever. In, I think it was the. Out of what is this, was this the fourth one or the third one?
I think it was fourth.
One we've done, so I would say this is the one that we probably spent. Uh, we use the most food.
Okay, good.
I didn't have a lot left over and I farmed it out to the highway guys and the fire department got a big chunk.
Okay.
But there wasn't a lot left to farm out, or in the past, I was at the mission last year and the core. And the fire department and the highway.
I thought you were looking for a home when you were down there, I didn't realize you brought us food.
Yeah, I brought, yeah, we had a lot left last year and it was the same amount, so I thought it was well done and it was a great day. Um, I have, I was telling Mary and Sharon, I've, we've already booked the DJ for the morning for the twenty-third next year. And we're having live music from twelve to two after that. You gotta book that stuff well in advance.
Only suggesting a couple of things that I've heard since the event, that it was successful. People that don't go online, don't look at Facebook, don't look at thing, kind of forgot about it, so. Getting the word out, we either signs around town, I don't know if we do put some signs up, townwide celebration.
There's a banner stuck right at the gate.
But other place around town, like little signs like you do when you're running for office on Post Road, Grove Street, different places might help. Um, number people, and the other thing that I was thinking as I was. Out there in a hayfield shaking hay and thinking about stuff, um. We start at ten to two, right? And then there's that hiatus that laps between when we do the fireworks, so I was wondering if. We ought to consider doing a a different start at two or three and run till the evening. And then there would be like only an hour lapse between the more or less the end and then when you did the fireworks.
My concern would be the traffic that would be up there. The other thing is, if we started at two o'clock. Where you're trying to feed people.
So you, so you do one, so you're doing lunch around noon time, so you feed people around five, six o'clock. It it's just more, and that was just something I was thinking about, if that would make it a little bit. Souls that want to stay in the fireworks, you you're out of there at two and then you gotta come back, so it was just something to think about.
I think next year, we should maybe be looking more towards going back to the fourth if the city's not getting fireworks. Cuz we caught a lot of flak this year for not.
But you know what? Fireworks were outstanding this year.
Oh, they're good, they're.
And I think that was because. That was a time that that, um, nobody else was having them, so.
I don't know.
They gave us a little more than.
I thought they were good, they were, they seemed extra loud. It was shocking, I like I was, I was in at the pool and it was like, it was like that.
Those seem pretty loud, a little extra TNT in that pop, all those dampness in the air.
Well, let's.
No, that's what does it.
You know, we're gonna be, we're gonna be doing budget time. We should, and and Sharon and I have had a couple of thoughts as well, because the 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 display areas. Weren't that well visited, so some of them might go in by the pool, some of them, maybe we do a. You know, a parade of town. Just around Northwood Fire Police, um, Highway and then don't have you guys up there for four hours. Um, but that's all stuff that we probably should talk about and your your suggestions as well. And see if we want to reconfigure it. We're we're picking up momentum, I think that. You know, I thought it was a a good, I was, took a quick nose count as we were trying to feed people. And we had at one, we had about a hundred people there at one point. Right around the food time, very slow from ten to eleven.
Right.
Very slow, so.
But it was a good thing we started when Matt said.
Yeah.
Um, because if we hadn't.
Yeah.
We would have been.
And I looked at the the flyer and the flyer said, we start serving at eleven, so it's a good thing, I didn't realize that.
Cooking for a while for everyone to be ready at eleven o'clock.
Yeah.
Just putting the burgers on a grill doesn't work.
So huge thank you, um, to Mike Rowe, who, um.
It was a long day.
It was a long day.
Well, no, it was a long day for me. But that's okay, everyone else does long days as the chief was just doing this for me the other day. So Bill, look at the chief, cuz when you were doing that, she gave you that little, not you, Chris. No, um, you know, huge thanks to the lifeguards that were still there, and that's other things we have to talk about. At at the end, when we start talking about it again.
Yeah.
And, you know, when things can get done, because then closing is big.
Yeah.
For me, unless you all want to come help close.
Well, that's the other thing, if we do it later in the day, then you, you know, you gotta spend another extra day trying to.
And we have a rain date, you know, we do it on a Saturday, but Sunday is technically the fallback rain date, even though depending on the firework kind of thing. But anyway, that be said, it was great, it was great weather, fun had by all, thanks to all the people that helped out, Kurt. You know, you like moving slow on the tractor, you did a great job, your daughter Jamie was fantastic.
Thank you.
As the host on the centipede, whatever it's called.
Whatever.
Um, it it was great, the cooking you guys, I couldn't be happier. Uh, other than that, soccer, um. It's right around the corner, they're hopefully starting in a couple of weeks, I'll have schedules out so Bill can put them on the website. Um, we met with the website lady, or I just happened to walk in and the lady that helped with our online forum, we're gonna. Chat and do something very similar for registering for the pool next year. Um, as well, so that you can pay online and then we've kind of worked out the logistics of coming to pick up your pass, proving you're a resident. Cuz that's the big thing. Um, still growing, cuz it's still growing. Um, other than that, you know, things have been, it was a really good summer we had. If you count the townwide celebration, we probably tapped, we probably eclipsed nine thousand viewers. Now, I keep a record of every day, how many people come in. And then tally it up, we were at like eight thousand six hundred before townwide celebration. So that's daily visits every day, whether, you know, it's a swim lessons, but they come every day, you know, so that kind of thing. So we we average that every year between eight and nine thousand, just so you know.
Yeah.
How many people use that pool? In that span of time.
Yeah.
Um, for our pool, so.
Well, I'll tell you, the school kids that came and helped were excellent, your lifeguards.
Yeah, they were great.
Yep, your lifeguards are top notch, so.
Everyone, you know, it was a good summer, it was it was a hot summer, so that means we were busy. Um, other than that, everything else seems to be going, we have the Halloween party slated for the. Oh, it's not even up there, but we are doing it on the twenty, Friday, the twenty-fifth. Will be our Halloween party, um, the city party is the twenty-sixth. So that will be our trick or treat on the trail at the school and once school starts, we'll start planning that. Um, so last year we had a fire truck, so maybe we can do that again, that would be awesome if you guys want to pull up in the back. Um, but that's literally right around the corner, uh, which means everything. Um, but that's literally right around the corner, uh, which means everything else is too, so.
I would say that.
And I didn't say.
I don't wanna say it, but I've been in school, so it means it's over.
Big thank you to Fire and Police Department, and I know that for townwide celebration, Dell was up running the transfer station. Um, I hope he got something to eat, but not sure that.
I went up.
He did.
Okay.
Off the offer, we're just so darn busy up there.
Um, how did you think, Chris, as far as the traffic with the kids, with the trucks? Like coming over, cuz you guys had nice displays and stuff like that.
There's a lot of kids.
Yeah, and Teddy, what about you guys for your speed cart and?
Speed cart's always a hit.
Okay.
It's always a hit.
So I know the little kids love it, so.
Yeah.
That's all I really have, unless, uh, unless, oh, Bill, what was I?
The, the, the damage.
Oh, so, yeah, the damage. Um, I'm still waiting for people to, and it's funny, you mentioned Royals paying early, because I called them, cuz they do our work, they've done our work, and they texted me back saying, well, we're just waiting to talk to Kerry to see how it's gonna get built. I'm like, oh, okay, like, usually they would come down and fix it, and I know they're busy, I'm, I'm not, I, I don't know their business, but that's when they were, when you were doing the prepay thing, just kind of.
Yeah.
Okay, cuz that's never really happened.
Maybe we should.
And nothing has been fixed yet. So this is going on a week and a half, I already called the, the overhead door company, they're, I'm waiting for them to call me back. Royals came. And they haven't contacted me back yet to when they can get in to fix the door, I fixed it myself as far as.
Yeah.
Maybe so you couldn't get in, but, um, and there was a question, Chief, about, and we did talk about that, that no trespassing signs. They were already at the pool on the fences, the people walked right by them, so they have no excuse. But they're already there, cuz that was a discussion of should we put them up, but they already.
They are there, so that.
They've already, they've been there since day one, it looked like, so.
That was a tragedy with burglary, so.
Okay, yeah.
A third one, so.
Okay. Right.
We might have an idea of a second one, so.
No chance to get restitution for damage?
Well, let's see, they're all under the age of 16, so you're probably correct.
That's what parents are for.
That's what I was saying.
You're responsible for your kids.
Well, when a father stands there and says, oh, yeah, I, I noticed the gate was locked, well, you noticed the gate was locked, why the hell?
And so dad should ante up whatever the cost is.
I, I'm in total agreement, but I'm not a lawyer, and I, I don't run the system.
But who's responsible, I mean, oh geez, they're my kids and they did damage, but it's not my fault, and the town should pay for it, that's no. Maybe it's some.
I'm in agreement, and I, I know that they are, but their hands are literally.
They can only do what law allows.
No pun intended, boys.
If they're minors, and if they go into a diversion program, then usually restitution can be part of diversion, so we might.
Well, I'd be pushing for it, did any avenue, any way, something to make them think twice before you go vandalize a public building or any building again.
At this point in life, I don't think that's.
Wanna have, no. No. Oh, one last thing is, uh, thank you for the, speaking about the founders wall sign, hopefully you've got a chance to look at it.
Yeah.
Um.
Thank you.
And, uh, that bill I can put somewhere, where?
Townwide Celebration.
Townwide Celebration, yeah, it was only like 250, so, um, thank you for the people that showed up and did that, that was, I'm glad it's up there.
Sharon did a good, good bunch of calling around to get some of the families and friends of the founders there, so that was well received.
My favorite moment, though, was watching Chris Howe ride the library bike up the road to get there. And then realizing he didn't really have brakes as he was coming down into the pool area, that was fun. You know, it had reminiscent of, uh, what you call it, Dorothy and the Wizard of Oz.
You guys on the firm, brakes are optional, brakes are highly overrated.
Do you have any questions for me, are we all good?
We also with Mike?
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Alrighty.
Larry Del Venery. Good evening.
Evening. I'm not here to ask for any money, yes. Okay, you've held a nice clean meeting tonight, now it's gonna get a little trashy. Okay. Each year I have to estimate what I'm gonna take for income on recyclables and stuff. I had a banner year last year. I brought in $117. I projected, uh, $4,600 from the year before, but evidence is just way, way, way down. So I've been talking to several different people, and, uh, I take out 73 boxes a year out of that transfer station. And it cost me anywhere from 170 to 150 dollars every time they pick them up.
And these are recyclables?
These are the recyclables, yes, and the 170 is my compactor and CND. So I was talking with, uh, my hollers and stuff, and they said, why don't you go zero sort? So I'm there, tell me why I should, cuz four years ago, Don sent me that way, but it wasn't feasible for us to go zero sort back then. So I don't even know if it is right now, I'm just waiting for more information to come back to me. Either, that would cut down on your trucking. So for instance, like the plastic, I get 0.81 ton in one container, so, and you're okay, how much would it be if I had zero sort with another compactor? Either, we could get them all in one, just that right there. So I'm just waiting to hear back from, uh, sellers.
Okay.
But before word got out what I was doing up there, I wanted the board to know.
Yeah.
I'm just, just checking, that's all I'm doing right now.
I'm glad, I mean, that's the sort of thing we should check in on.
Yeah, cuz that's a while, yeah. That requires a second compactor.
That would require a second compactor.
Another one or two of those boxes.
Another one compact.
Yeah, but I'd be selling the other ones.
Yeah.
I'd be selling the other boxes to get rid of them.
Yeah.
Right, but I'm just saying, that it's, zero sorts done the same way as trash.
Exactly.
So we have two trash boxes now, right?
We have two trash boxes now.
You would have two.
So I would have to get.
Two recycling boxes.
Yes.
Okay, and another compactor.
And one of those, and I haven't even gone that far.
So we did price it out all once.
We did, uh, I don't remember what it was.
It was four or five years ago.
Yes, it was, uh, when Don Chaffee was here, so.
And there was some reason we decided to stay the way.
Because I was making enough on the recyclables back then, but no, I'm not.
I can guarantee as soon as we go zero sort, price of recyclables will go through the roof.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, you'd be better off playing the stock market than you are the recyclables.
Oh, yeah.
No, no, I just wanted the board to know where I was going, in case they heard it on the street.
Yeah.
And once I get the numbers, I will give it to the transfer station committee and let them go for it.
Yep.
And.
Probably make a lot of people happy if you go to zero.
Uh, it would, but I'm just trying to do it.
Yeah, I know.
The best way for the town, so.
Any questions?
All I ask.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dell.
Thank you for tonight.
Alright, Dave Sears, town.
Hello, everybody.
Yep. Hi, and Dave Sears birthday.
Stop it, you don't have no.
August 25th, so we missed, but not by much, so happy birthday, Dave.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Um, it's hard to believe that I'm like a fingernail away from 60, I don't know how that is, but it is.
Oh, I'm so sad for you.
Thank you, I appreciate your, your condolences. Um, so, uh, just to start off with the Mike Rowe thing and his ladder, I just wanna say that brute force and ignorance goes a long way.
I thought you were gonna tell him you just gotta take the bolts out first.
No, it was wedged in there pretty good, but we got it, take a lot more than that to get us down. So, uh, the last few weeks, we spent quite a bit of time on the post road sidewalk. I don't know if anybody's been by there lately, but it's black now. Um, yeah, they paved it yesterday, came out really well. Um, we put up the, the wall last week at the Hudson's, that came out really well, I'm pretty happy with that. Uh, we spent pretty much all of today painting in front of the school, so when they start school tomorrow, they got all fresh new paint with arrows and lines and. Um, we had a little bit of extra time, so we went down to Post Road and Route 7 and did those turn lanes down there at the end of the day. Um, as far as, uh, townwide celebration, we had actually 29 entries for truck names. Uh, which I think was, yeah, that was pretty good. Um. As always, there's, it's, it, you know, some, a couple of people said, well, why are you doing it again, why are you doing it? Cuz it's actually fun, like, some of the stuff these kids come up with, and some of the adults do, but some of the stuff these guys come up with is, is just too funny, so. Um. Uh, I had a call earlier last week about drainage on Victoria Drive, uh, so we went up there and we met with a lady. Um, and she was more concerned about her neighbors than her. Um. And that, that whole development is a hill to the south and a hill to the west. And I don't really, there's really no great solution, and, um, we've run into this a couple of times in a couple of different places, and, um. I, I think we might be able to do something with paving a little bit, but you kinda move somebody's problem to somebody else's problem, so. Um, I don't know, we'll, we'll kind of work on that and figure it out. Um, we had, uh, a little bit of a mechanical issue with the Western Star, and we had to put a wheel seal in, we had a wheel seal that was leaking, and a slack adjuster that was bad, so we put brakes and a wheel seal and slack adjuster on the Western Star that kept us entertained. I had one guy out with COVID one week and one guy out with COVID the next week, so, um, COVID's been running around the building a little bit. Uh, I believe that the last meeting, which I totally forgot was Monday. Um, there was an issue with the, uh, I believe it was a letter from some people on Hitzel Terrace about, uh, culvert being plugged, so I.
Yep.
I talked to Chris Clark, and he took the fire department up there last, last Wednesday, and they flushed the culvert, and there was no plug in the culvert. Um. You know, you get an inch of hour, an inch of rain an hour in 20 minutes, and there's not really much that we can do to kind of alleviate that, so. Uh, but I, I wanna thank the, the fire department for going up there and taking care of that for us, the homeowner came out apparently while they were there. And wasn't really happy that his conclusion that the culvert was plugged wasn't really valid, but that's okay for us. And then, um, we did have a highway committee meeting next, and I, and I don't know if you wanna deal with this, Joe. Um, I did have Bill print out some prices from Robert Clark for the Simons and Chesanna projects. So when you, I don't know if you wanna, I can do that, or you can just include it in the highway meeting, or the, yeah, the highway wrap up if you want, it's up to you.
Um, either way is fine, um, we have copies on our desk of both of those, one for the, uh, extension of the Post Road sidewalk to design on that, and the bottom line on that is, um, looks like about 20,000 to design the rest of that, if I read this right, is that the same what you got?
Yes, yep.
Yep. Um, so. And then the other project we discussed.
Just to touch, just to touch on that really quick, I met with Robert.
Go ahead.
We went, I met with Robert, and we, we met there and we went over it. Um, there's a couple of different ways to attack that. Um, so he's gonna actually come up with a couple proposals for the board to naan and pick their option, one is to carry the sidewalk on the west side of the road from Post Road up to the end, and then turn. We're gonna end up with a couple of crosswalks either way. Um, so if we stay on, we can stay on the west side and go all the way up, and then just turn and kind of go up that way, or we can cross by the pond, and there's a little bit more room on the east side going up that to that end, but that, that adds two crosswalks instead of just one, so, uh, he's gonna put together a couple of different rough sketches for the board to look at, and whichever one you guys opt for, um, he'll do the final design on that, that's.
Is this going to include design of going around the corner?
Yes, it will, it will include designing going around the corner.
Okay.
He's going to, he's actually going to, uh, contract somebody to go up there and, and do some borings, and see where the ledge is on that hill, see if we can easily make that less steep, or if it's gonna be, you know, a, a big problem to either remove the ledge or do something different there, so, uh, that, that's part of our proposal.
Good, good, good.
And that's that, and then the other project we were discussing is changing Simon's Avenue's location and its interface with Route 4A. And again, um, Dave asked for some pricing from a couple of firms, one, um, didn't have time and don't really do that, so Otter Creek, um, once again, gave us a proposal on that, and that one is for 23,000, which is a little more than he originally told you. Um, so you have any more information from Robert on that one, Dave?
I, I don't really, I think, um, I mean, if you look at his pricing, he said, you know, 5 to 7,000 to.
Yep.
You know, kind of design it, that's kind of where he is, and then I think he threw some other things out there, like easements and, you know, a final design, which would be.
Yep.
You know, your, your cut sheets and that kinda stuff. And then, you know, another 1,500 for permitting, which I'm not sure is really required. Um. Our talks with Chris, uh, he kinda said, just get us a, you know, a, a design, and we'll get you a permit, I doubt it's gonna be 1,500 dollars. So this is probably a little overinflated, just to cover a lot of bases, but I don't think that a lot of it's gonna be necessary.
But, you know, I think that, um, for these projects, we'll probably have to discuss this in detail at budget time and to see what we wanna go with, and um, I don't know if there's any funding for the design for the sidewalk, but hopefully, once we got the sidewalk designed extension, we could get some money maybe to help build it.
There's a, there's quite a bit of money out there for, um, bicycle and sidewalk and pedestrian stuff, so I'm hoping that when we get some solid numbers. Um, uh, you know, solid design and some solid numbers from Robert, I can start to scratch around and see if I can find some pet money somewhere. If it doesn't fully pay for it, we may offset some, have to see where we land.
Um, so that took care of the two projects in town from our meeting. Um, the beginning of the meeting, we discussed the, um, North End Sidewalk, um, and Stephanie was here. Um, we have a proposal from Sand Tech for the work, um, their price on that is 116,154, and that's, uh, the, the original design work for this, and that does come in under budget. Um, and it would be the recommendation of the sidewalk committee that, um, we move forward with that proposal from Sand Tech, there is a state contract that Mary has, that's like, it's like 100 pages of fun and games. Um. I'm guessing that we'll have to send that out to have Kevin peruse that, and just make sure it's all, you know, the, what, the information we got from Stephanie is the state doesn't really waiver much on that in what it is, so that's kind of what it is, and I'm.
I'm good with signing it tonight.
And I'd be okay with signing it, but.
There's nothing, he's, Kevin can look at that and say whatever he wants, but enough, there's nothing that can be changed in that document, period.
If we want, if we want to grant, so. So, yeah.
Is that a proposal?
That emotion?
So move.
Second.
Which is made in the second to approve the contract with consultant, Sand Tech.
And this is for the design phase of the, the, no, JP Sidewalk.
JP Sidewalk.
And it's a, it's a V trans contract that brings Sand Tech and us together.
And our, um, match is 10%?
I think it's, uh.
Do we pay a little bit on each?
Yes.
Each phase?
So the last meeting, we approved a payment to Stephanie, and then, um, you have in there, which I'll get to, a reimbursement request assigned to go to the state where we get most of that back. Um, you have in there, which I'll get to, a reimbursement request assigned to go to the state where we get most of that back, so. We do this, we're gonna do this in stages. This contract says draft because. They wanted you to look at it to see if you're okay with it, and then it'll go to Stan Tech and they'll say yes. And it'll come back to us to find it, to sign the final copy, but that does not necessarily take very long. So if your approval to sign it could say when we get it back, then when I get it. Sign it, we could move faster.
So, does your motion include?
Signing on Sand Tech's approval?
Um, having someone sign on the town's behalf?
This one?
One signature line.
You can have the other.
The chair to sign.
So that's the motion. Um, discussion.
We send it to Kevin, it's gonna be four months before we get that thing back and it's just gonna distract him from the other work that he needs to be doing for us.
Can't change, then there's nothing.
This is a six or seven year.
We're trying to beat the odds, Dave. You know me.
Yeah, I know.
Shall be completed on or before December thirty first, twenty twenty nine, so yes, we're gonna be at this for a while.
And I said, you know, Stephanie laughed when I said that, I said, you know, we're here to beat this six year thing.
Approve the contract agreement with the consultant, Stan Tech Consulting. And to have the chair sign on behalf of the select board, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? Motion carries, signing. I'm gonna sign the draft. And then you can tell, you can have me sign the real.
Cause they're gonna look at it and then they're gonna say, okay, we can't change it, so we have, we approve it.
Yeah, it's kind of, and and Stan Tech already signed up to be the. Whatever they call it for these projects.
Now, the other two things from Otter Creek Engineering, you, do you have any proposal on those?
What are your thoughts, Dave?
I, I, I mean, I think the Simon's Avenue thing, I don't know that we're gonna get a better price, I don't know that we're gonna get it done any quicker or cheaper. Um, and I think that solves a problem that is never gonna go away if we don't do this. Um, and the uh, Chisana Drive piece is something that you guys were looking to do to get that connected as soon as possible. Um, I don't think his price is outrageous. And like I said, he's gonna, he's gonna provide a couple of options. Uh, you guys pick which one you like and he'll do a final design on it and we'll see if we can find some money and make this thing run.
This is normally the type of thing that we use carryover money for.
Yeah, I mean, we have an, we have an engineering, I think there's an engineering line in your budget, Dave.
There is.
So if we spend it, then we'll, we'll, we'll make the difference up out of the, the carryover money.
Historically, the carryover, we like to, we like to spend on improving our infrastructure.
Right.
This is something that will definitely improve two areas on separate sides of the town.
So um, Chisana Drive sidewalk design is, is that the twenty, twenty thousand?
Yeah.
And the Simon's Avenue design for reconfiguration is twenty three thousand. And one signature blank on each. What's your pleasure? I haven't heard any more.
I'll move that we accept both proposals from Otter Creek Engineering for the two projects.
Which is a preferred vendor for the town.
Is a preferred vendor, and we did reach out to another preferred vendor in town and they declined the opportunity to work on it.
Second.
And are the funds to come from the engineering line?
Yes, in the highway budget.
In the highway budget, discussion. Matt?
I guess I feel, I feel better knowing that there's funds particularly carryover to pay for these, but I guess I don't fully understand the Chisana piece of it myself. I'm not sure what this really gets us, building a sidewalk there.
So the, the, so the idea with the sidewalk to start with is to allow the kids to go from the school. To the shared use path at Northwood. So we have the sidewalk that Dave just did from. Trying to the school to Chisana, which is a road to nowhere, cause the idea was to keep the kids out of the road. So now they're going to walk up to Chisana. And then the only way to get to the shared use path that down at the corner is to walk up the road. So we have, we, we've just built the sidewalk to nowhere.
Well, you built it to Chisana, which is a pretty quiet street, isn't it? I mean.
Those are the ones that probably will bite you. Um, and I think for the safety of the kids, I think we should pursue. You know, I've, I've questioned this, right, for the whole eight years I've been here, is that we're building a sidewalk to nowhere that goes nowhere because. They're still walking in the road.
A lot of this started before I got here, but the way I understand it, the original intent was to be part of that. I'm not sure what they call it, but it's like the, the Killington to Fair Haven bike route thing, so. Uh, you know, we've, we've made our connections from Northwood to Route seven. If we, if we make this connection between uh, the backside of Northwood and Post Road. We make that connection, so it's, it's a declared shared use slash bike path slash uh. Whatever it's gone by these days, and I think, I believe that there is a proposed. Recreation path going from Killington to Fair Haven, if I'm not mistaken. And this is, without this piece, this doesn't link those things together. We need to link the backside of Northwood to Post Road to get people down to. Eventually down to uh, Pine Wood Park and on from there.
It's the Velamont Trail.
So, if we, but without this Chisana piece, we can't be part of that. Uh, trail package.
What sense do we know, I mean, bikers are gonna ride on Chisana Drive.
Yeah, but I think it, I think it, they're trying to list it as a complete. Quote unquote, complete streets kind of thing where it's a continuous path from wherever to Fair Haven to wherever, I don't even know where it's going, but. I think that, that was the original intent.
And I think that if we do this and be part of that, it'll enhance our opportunity to get a grant to pay for it.
If we have a set of engineered prints, then we can apply for grants.
And it's, I think it's, you know, based on, you know, we're, like I said, we're, the, the other leg of this is that sidewalk from Post Road to Lincoln Avenue. So we're connecting all of these pieces together.
And even, even if we don't end up building something all the way down Chisana, we still gotta figure out that transition to get up around the corner. Cause that drive, our new sidewalk ends at a driveway. And now they either have to go out in the road or across somebody's lawn or get up to Chisana. And this engineering will at least give us a scope as to how to make that happen, whether we. Just bring it up to the top of that hill and they walk on the road after that can be determined.
Once we see, yeah.
This actually goes back to a study that was done before I was on the select board. And it is, th- this was the chosen route out of many that were looked at, including some behind the school. The, I mean, it isn't perfect, but it is the preferred route that was chosen.
Yeah, the behind the school project or option um, was stymied because you gotta go across private property. And, and there was a problem getting that permission, that, that wasn't gonna happen. You know, we bought that land, the school bought the land behind the school, but you still have private property that you have to go across, so that's. We own more land, but we can't still get to, you know, you can see the other side of the river, but there's no bridge. That's, that's why we're going this route.
So I, personally, I'm gonna vote for it, cause I, I've been waiting for this for a long time.
The big, the nice part about going with Otter Creek is he's been doing, Robert's been doing pretty much all of our streets engineering. And when you're working with the same engineer, he already knows what our goal is at, as a town, he knows what we're looking for. And he's always coming back with rugged prints, so he hasn't had any issues.
He did a really good job on that water line up there.
You ready to vote?
I am.
Did you, did you include that I would sign on behalf of the town if it was passed? Okay, all in favor of the Chisana Drive. And Simon's Avenue two proposals, money to come out of the engineering line?
Yes, it is, highway.
Highway engineering. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Motion carries.
I do believe that concludes the highway portion. While our discussion, we just.
We say on the earlier one where the money was coming from?
For.
As Kerry will ask.
Or JP Sidewalk?
Oh, that's our, that's the grant that we have, but what's our match share?
I don't know if we've budgeted any money yet, boy.
That'd be in that engineering line.
Yeah.
That'd be that same engineering line.
Okay.
We'll have to, we're gonna have to look at that going forward, where our match for that guy, that is coming from, if we have to put some in Dave's budget. To cover our costs. I don't think there's anything in there, is there, Dave, for the, that north sidewalk?
Nothing specific for that sidewalk, no.
Okay, so we'll have to talk about that come budget time.
Yep.
Well, Kerry's gonna wanna know.
So, so would, we would be, again, we're gonna be using that. Um, our ma, our funds would be coming out of the highways.
Isn't there money, isn't there money in the grant for that?
I just don't know how it works.
Yeah, it's just a match, we need the.
You get, we get a bill, we pay the bill, we ask the state, give us, give us money back, they give us our difference back.
Right, so the hundred and. Hundred and sixteen thousand for that would come out of. The highway engineering, and then if we get, if it's a ten percent match, we're gonna get all but. About eleven thousand back.
Yeah. Now we'll go back into that line to, to flush that up.
So, so basically your, your line is gonna be wicked overdrawn and then it'll come back in twenty, twenty percent, so we're gonna be paying about. Twenty-two, what?
The grant for like seven hundred and fifty-one for a match, like hundred fifty-six.
Total, right, but out of this, so this one sixteen is a portion of the seven hundred and something.
Yes, this is, this is part of those grant, that, that grant budget.
So, so was the grant for six hundred and something and then our amounts to hundreds on top? So we have to come up, over the course of this, we gotta come up with a hundred and.
An immediate bill that we've just agreed to pay, so.
Well, there, there is no.
That will come as they do their services, so we're not gonna.
We, we won't have to pay the whole hundred and sixteen.
Okay.
Right, that'll be the total.
We have to go into, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, this, these are services for years.
Through the end of the project.
Two thousand twenty-nine.
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty-eight.
The, the original. Yeah, I think that original grant was six hundred and fifty or six hundred and twenty-five thousand. And so we're gonna have to come up with about a hundred and twenty something thousand over the five years, so it'll cost us about twenty. So what we may have to do is either increase the engineering portion of the highway budget. To cover that or put in a specific line for the northeast sidewalk or whatever we call JP Sidewalk. But for now, we won't get any immediate on this, we're just approving that amount, then once they start billing us, it'll be. I think, like you said, but we pay the full amount, then we get reimbursed.
We pay, we pay the invoice and then we send a letter to the state, Mary's got one right now to send, to sign, say, we, we paid it, please give us our money back.
Okay, yeah. Alright.
Okay.
I don't know if he's got anymore, I'm done.
Dave, you got anything else?
I got nothing else. It's after nine o'clock, I got nothing but four o'clock bell rings early.
Thanks for hanging in tonight.
Very much.
Absolutely, I missed the last one, I owed you this one.
Yeah, you don't have to make it up all in one night, though.
Um, thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Marcia Choffey, sorry, a long night for you?
Yeah, it has been. I had to wake myself up a couple of times, getting to bed early. Um, I really have nothing else to say except thank you for approving the um. The uh, third Lister, I think Kathy's gonna be a great fit for our office. And uh, I really, I really appreciate, you know, you interviewing her and approving her for our Lister position.
You're very welcome, I agree with you, I think she'll be very good.
I do too, thank you. But that's about it, we're um. You know, we've, we're been through grievances, we are now um, setting up appointments for. Um, site visits with uh, people that have had, um, you know, outbuildings or improvements done to their homes. And uh, trying to get them done before the snows fly, um, so that we're not out there, you know, in January, February. Trying to um, you know, uh, assess people's uh, properties, so that's about it for me.
Thank you, I will note that the Board of Civil Authority met to hear the one. Uh, grievance or tax appeal of, tax of property appeal.
Yeah.
The appraisal, um, it was a very long, uh, but very thorough. Um, proceeding and so we, we took in evidence both from the Lister's office and from the property owners. And we then assigned an inspection team and they are going out this coming weekend. And then we get a report, we will reschedule, we will reconvene to deliberate and then issue a. Uh, written decision, so that's the process. Thanks for setting all of that up.
Thank you.
Learned a lot, okay.
Yeah, it was a, it was a very learning experience from uh, from this one property, for sure.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, any questions for Marcia? If not, thanks for waiting up.
Thank you.
Alright, um, Bill Sweet, Town Administrator.
But unfortunately not least. Kyle. Okay, so. Uh, we have a few things left, uh, you have uh, in your packets. The information from the State of Vermont, two hundred and fiftieth anniversary resolution. Just, just come in right before the last meeting, so we postponed it to this one.
We labeled that as B, um, they're essentially asking us to either set up a. Commission or a liaison uh, of diverse citizens or an individual to work with the Vermont. Two hundred and fiftieth anniversary commission on any or all activities, um, so. We don't have to, we have to eventually name the committee or the liaison, but we don't have to do it tonight, all we have to do is pass the resolution. Um, this is totally cool, I love history, so I think, and frankly. If Barbara were on, I think she'd be reporting that we've made some progress on a hurdle of the Pocket Park. So maybe we could tie all of that in, cause that's an incredibly historic area. Anyway, that aside, what's your pleasure on the Vermont two hundred and fiftieth anniversary resolution?
Move we adopt.
Motion's been made in the second to adopt.
Not sure who the poor soul's gonna be, but not it.
When are we supposed to do that? It makes, the way it's worded makes it sound like we already did it, but obviously we're not.
Oh, this twelfth day of August, we should probably change that, we're, we're doing it by the deadline, which is.
So.
They wanted us to do it by.
I mean, I suppose we can always add more people, as long as we have somebody as well.
Sure, I think they just want a contact person and they will add us to the list of towns that have this.
Determine who wants to be the victims.
Right.
I'd be interested, it's kind of neat history.
Yeah, yeah.
Little period of time when we were an independent state, a country.
Gotcha.
That's not mentioned in here.
As I've said, I, I love to tell people from Texas that, because. As I've said, I, I love to tell people from Texas that cuz it really. Gets their knickers in a twist. They think you're the only ones. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, please say aye. Any, aye, anyone opposed? Okay, so we all need to sign this.
Uh, while you're doing that, the planning commission did discuss the hazardous waste storage public comment. Information and is not recommending any action need that needs to be taken.
We had received communication from. Uh, Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation that. A hazardous waste storage facility permit was being sought by. Green Mountain Tower? Yeah, and it's in the city, so we get noticed because we're an adjoining property owner, our planning commission. Is not recommending that we do anything with it, so do we receive this for the record and that's it? Folks okay with it?
Based upon the building committee meeting, you have. Uh, the contracts for those vendors that they were recommending.
We discussed the prices, it's the first time we got quite a few prices on. Fuel and propane and even a price on diesel fuel, but we do not purchase any off-road fuel. In bulk, it's usually done, um, at the local station, so. Um, after lengthy discussion, Kurt and I and Bill discuss this in different goods and bads. And we would recommend that we, um, go with Johnson Energy for our fuel heating oil. Um, primarily because they are the only, um, concern that puts a cap on the price sale charges. The, the pricing was kinda similar, some of them had, um, I think, well, maybe it was the propane that had the limitations, I think it was. Different thing, so we, we would recommend the, um, going with Johnson's. For heating oil needs, do you wanna do them separately?
Why don't we do them separately? This is Johnson, oh, I'm sorry, I should let you finish your motion because somebody has to sign.
Mary will be signing on behalf of the town to commit to Johnson's, um, delivering fuel to the town.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? This is a maximum cap of forty cents per gallon over Johnson Energy cost. On day of delivery with a maximum capped rate of two point nine 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 for the contract period. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries.
We, excuse me, discussed the purchase of.
No, it's just me.
Fuel. Um, or propane, and we had a number of, um, different, um, concerns. Irving's suburban propane and Procter gas, and the committee would recommend that we, um, go with Procter gas. Um, one of the things, one of the companies, they had like a sixteen hundred gallon limit. Or maximum or something, I'm not sure, just exact details, um, it's going, I believe the two tanks that. The new public safety building are a thousand gallons each, and they would exceed. The maximum for that, so.
They were only gonna secure the price for sixteen hundred gallons.
Right, so I, I did follow up with him afterwards, and that was a real concern, he's, and he said, well, that was based upon what you used in the past is. Right, but we have a whole building we're adding to this, he's like, noted.
It's a little concerning when they limit the amount of fuel that you can buy it and given price that, that bothers.
Especially propane because it's all volume game, the more you buy, the cheaper it is. So why they're capping you at gallons is weird.
So we would recommend that we, um, go with Procter gas for propane needs.
Fixed price of one point seven nine nine per gallon?
And there's no limit on the gallons.
Chair to sign?
There are two things to sign, one is the contract and the other one is, uh, that they can make, they, they need to go and do it in a leak test of. Of the building that they're gonna be putting it in, so. That second one gives them permission to go and do that, so.
So did somebody make a motion?
That's the one, the second page of that is what, is what they need, is what they need to sign, but that's because we're setting up a new, uh, address.
No, it doesn't. The application is for propane delivery and service only, it doesn't constitute a pricing contract. Credit terms are thirty days for approved open accounts, minimum delivery is a hundred gallons or filled for tanks that hold less than a hundred gallons. Procter gas is not responsible for runouts or freeze-ups if we can't access the tanks. If your home is unoccupied, including vacation or rental homes, your heating system fails or if the propane is not the primary heat source. Customers must provide safe and adequate access for us to service. This is for new customers and are we, we're not a new customer of them.
The building is.
We as customer are the applicant, the town of Rutland is the applicant.
The new, I don't know, they require a new one for a new service address?
And there's nothing in here about going in and.
That's the next page.
Mary's missing a page.
I agree. That they have my permission to any, any property which I own rent.
You need to reword that a little different for towns.
Town, no, they can't come on my property, although I do business with them.
Coming anyway.
We need to tell them to, they need a municipal contract that refers to public buildings.
How much municipal stuff they do.
Yeah, well, they need a little education, everybody needs to learn something.
Okay, I just added, I took out which I, uh, just said which is owned by the town of Rutland. Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
That price is a dollar seventeen, dollar nineteen?
Uh, one point seven nine nine.
So just so you know, residential delivered to my home is three something. That's a pretty good price.
Does anybody wanna co-sign?
I really wish that we could.
I'm not gonna give Procter gas information regarding my employment.
No, what I filled out is all they need, so.
Some lawyer did it, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, the last thing, the last thing in your packet, what we talked about earlier are the letters. From the city that they're sending to their commercial and large resident property owners, uh, they're meeting with them tomorrow morning. Uh, to talk about what the upcoming plans for them may be and, but they want, they want to let us know that they're, they're doing that in case anybody wants to tag along and listen in. Alright, uh, that should do it for what's in the packet. Rest of the things, uh, so, uh, we re- recently were invited to the grand opening of the new Eco Car Wash in Seven South. Uh, I did go down there and it's much fanfare, it was, uh, ribbon cutting and everything, uh, out front and it was very nice, very nice place. Uh, people were there, um, lined up, ready to go, so it's, uh, that's.
Free car washes, right, for a donation?
For donation, yeah, yeah, and they're doing, they're doing some discounts to start off with, uh, so yeah.
Did we do a letter to them?
Um, I, I have, I have, the ownership has been, been changing, so I don't know who to do it to at this point. Because that's, so.
You can just send it to Eco Car Wash.
There will be a letter, yes.
Down at whatever address they're at.
I got them their release of maintenance agreement, they're much happier with that than they are with the.
I know, but we need to like.
Yes, it, it will, it will get there. Uh, we did get the estimate for the remodel for downstairs, you guys have a copy, I should have Mary a copy, but also. Uh, and it took Robert Clark pulling teeth to get, or not Robert Clark, Ed Clark, uh, pulling teeth to get, to get that one, so that's, that's what we got, that's kind of our, our. Benchmark at this point, so. That's a great discussion for a building, for the building committee to, to have, um, to go over that.
Okay, so this goes to building committees?
Yeah, they have, and they have, they have their copies. I said before, um, I did reach out to Joe Anthony from the owner of the mall and, uh, he, uh, and. Sounds like a couple other people will be coming to the meeting on September twenty-fourth. He has added some interesting guests to that invite, so we'll, we'll see what, we'll see what comes of that, but that could be interesting. Um, we talked about the build risk policy, the standard tech contract, uh, in your green folder. Uh, is that reimbursement request for the state, I think it's numbers.
Well, we just signed the wrong resolution, but I don't care. We signed a perfectly good one.
That's okay.
Okay, number four. Um, review the employees closed in, what is this for?
That's for the work that Stephanie's done so, for us so far. On the front, the front page, it gives a very short little.
Stephanie Burke, Municipal Project Manager.
They pay us, conduct our portion.
Efficiency at its finest.
Just send us six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we'll build the sidewalk for three fifty and keep it balanced.
But we're not gonna.
Build a sidewalk for one seventy-five.
She's requesting reimbursement for one thousand one hundred one dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Requesting it for us, yes, we've paid her and this will come back to us.
Right, okay. Do we need to sign?
Yes, that, that.
To sign approving, so if you guys would say.
Make a motion that Mary can sign on behalf of the board.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? Do, do you wanna finish your sentence? All in favor, thank you very much.
We're in now, Mary.
There's no going back.
We, yeah, there's no going back.
On your desks, you have, uh, from Suburban Propane, an invitation for a, uh, event for the community cupboard on September tenth. Uh, details are in that message on your desk if you would like to attend. I got another request from the, uh, group doing the national opioid settlement about our, uh, thing. We do have the option to reply to them to allocate our funds to one of the other recipients on the list if we so choose. Would we like to do that rather than?
Yes, I think we would, I think we decided it was like under two thousand.
It's a thousand dollars.
How about, nice try, it's very restricted, but Rutland City is getting.
Like a hundred thousand.
Yeah, let's give it to them.
Remind them every time we fill our air tanks.
Okay, so.
Wait, 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 um, motion to give our opioids. To Rutland City. Our neighbor and friend. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, please say aye. Motion carries.
After nine o'clock, this group goes to hell and again.
Sometimes before nine o'clock.
Demolition on the pad out front of the building will be done Friday and a new pad will be poured on Monday and they're gonna have a temporary ramp covering it. So people can walk across it till it cures. So by the time the next board meeting is.
Skirt the tree a little bit more?
No, this is just the cement.
Billy's been trying to get that done since he's been in that job.
And we're, 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 we're coming in, we're even coming in. Yeah, so this is good. Uh, tomorrow morning, the, uh, Stephanie's gonna be here, um, along with Marty and myself, we're gonna be doing the work. To start the local hazard mitigation plan update, so that starts right in early tomorrow morning. So I'll give Stephanie that information, she'll be very happy to have that. Uh, and then, raised with that meeting ending, Marty, I'll leave right here, here, go over to GMP for a shit and a damn emergency meeting, so. Um, yeah, we have a lot of stuff to do tomorrow that won't be, won't be meeting minutes unfortunately, so. Uh, there are a couple thank you cards, I believe in that folder. One or two?
This is from. Charles Woods the third, Rutland High School senior, class of twenty twenty-four, thank you very much for the scholarship. I'm going to Stetson University in Deland, Florida, I will do my very best. Um, best working toward a degree in business, I really appreciate your help and support, thank you sincerely. Okay, that was very nice.
It was.
That goes up on our.
Yes, it will. Uh, and actually, I was looking at a project list and there's a few things that are all simultaneously underway, so that's, that's a, that's a good one. And.
Would you shoot an email please to, um, doctor? On the, the memorial town hall monument?
Yep, that group does email around, they. They haven't recently, but.
But just a reminder that we're gonna start building a budget and if they want us to include anything in it for them. We need to hear from them soon.
Town Hall will be closed Monday for Labor Day, so we won't be here. That is. Everything I have.
That little thing there, Bill, we talked about, um, from the building committee is that when we do budgets, um, because of the number of generators, we need. Add a.
Generator fuel.
There, I, uh, fuel line to our emergency management priority portion. So we've been just taking the fuel out of that cuz all of the generators, because they're backup power, come out of the emergency management, so some.
Yeah, they're all, they're all under one, on one budget line, but, and that, and that's, I think, and I think we talked about, that's where we will pay for the initial fill from.
Yeah, I think that's, that'll be the plan like that, so six hundred gallons of fuel up there. Johnson's will be delivering at forty cents cuz the generator will take the same fuel as the furnace, so it'll be. And they, that's, and they've been doing the one at the school and they've been.
They've been to all of them, yeah.
So we can just add that in there because that'll be there.
And their, their contract, their contract for next year will include that generator as well, they've got all specs on it.
That's mostly.
Um, I did have one real quick thing for building committee, I received an email a couple of days ago from. Vermont Government Historic Preservation Grant Applications are now available. Um, these are the folks who give. Some money for restoration of historic buildings like this one. Maximum is twenty thousand dollars and it's available to nonprofits such as municipalities. And includes restoration and repair of roofs, structural elements, foundations, windows, towers and steeples. And other important components of a historic building.
Apply to our renovations downstairs, but.
I wonder if we can fix that.
Foundation.
Fix the exit out there.
Maybe, so.
It's about twenty thousand, thirty thousand.
And our match is. Still, I mean.
We could inquire.
If you can ask.
Absolutely, one little section that we could.
Deadline, uh, Monday, October seventh, so we have a little time to, we've actually got some stuff.
Because that maybe, that others.
Churches are eligible.
Hey, don't be stealing our money over here.
You should. Um, so I'm gonna stick this information right in the green folder, so you have it.
Big folder now.
Bill, we gotta apply before the church.
I guess so, we got it.
Twenty thousand per gram. I know, that's exactly right, yeah, um, that's all I got. Anybody else have anything? Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor of adjourning, please say aye. Motion carries, return, thank you, everybody, long meeting and boy did, we spend a lot of money.